Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate seeing all of you here tonight. It's going to be a big hearing night, and so we're thrilled you're all joined us for the public process this evening. I will start by calling upon Councilmember Ambrose for the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Reflection.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Rushafield, do the roll call. Mayor Simpson? Here. Mayor Pro Tem Mormon?
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Rupert?
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of minutes for October 7, 2025. Are there any corrections or changes to the record? Seeing none, those stand approved. Tonight, we have two proclamations. First, I will call upon Councilmember Davis for proclamation of National Community Planning Month.
Thank you. Will the CED team come to the microphone? You know, strong and thoughtful community planning and economic development will build a vibrant and sustainable community. So, Arvada is lucky to have this team that you see of professional planners, designers, economists, whose works result in wonderful community in which we all live, play, and work. So, thank you to the team. I will read the proclamation. Whereas October is recognized as National Community Planning Month, a time to pause and consider the important role planning and development play in creating vibrant and sustainable communities for all. And whereas the work of planners, local governments, and community members contribute to the creation of well-designed public places, transportation systems, and affordable housing, enhancing our quality of life. And whereas, community planning helps foster a sense of belonging and shared ownership for residents, businesses, and organizations. And whereas thoughtful, inclusive planning efforts are more important than ever as the city of Arvada and other communities along the Front Range endeavor to provide a broad range of housing and other public amenities suited to our diverse population. And whereas, the city of Arvada will soon launch a comprehensive planning process, inviting input from the community members as we develop guidelines for land use, transportation, parks, and open space, and more. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Arvada, Colorado, that the month of October 25, 2025, be designated as National Community Planning Month. We encourage all Arvada community members to consider engaging in the process to plan and shape our future, dated this 21st day of October, 2025.
We'll do a quick photo, and then Ms. Garner, if you'd like to say anything.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Davis and council. I just wanted to note that there are other members of this team that are not within CED that we want to acknowledge that are also planners. So, I think Carrie Briscoe is hiding over there. We've got Sarah Miley, and I would also like to add that Isa Petrikowska is also a planner. She couldn't make it tonight, but we just wanted to have everybody here. And this is also not indicative of our entire staff that works to support CED and community development. So, kudos to our administrative team, to our permit technicians, to our plans examiners, to our building inspectors, and our building official as well. Thank you.
Thank you all for your hard work. Your work for our city is immeasurable, and we thank you all every day. And in addition, I know our agenda says Councilmember Pfeiffer, but I am going to turn it over to Councilmember Rupert, since it is his last hearing for the proclamation for Law Enforcement Records Personnel Week.
Thank you, Mayor. I am pleased to present this proclamation. Whereas dedicated law enforcement records personnel serve to provide vital services and are crucial in assisting law enforcement agencies to identify, pursue, capture, and process suspected criminals. And whereas these professionals continually use their expertise and experience in maintaining criminal justice statistics and improving apprehension strategies. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff law enforcement records is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that they perform. And whereas the law enforcement records personnel serving the city of Arvada have exhibited professionalism, efficiency, and compassion during their performance of their essential duties. And whereas the state of Colorado has designated the second week in November to recognize law enforcement records personnel. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that mayor and city council of the city of Arvada, Colorado, hereby recognize the period between November 9, 2025, and November 15, 2025, as Law Enforcement Records Personnel Week. And I understand that we have Police Operations Manager Paula Ballafest and -- close enough?
Close enough.
Thank you. And Record Supervisor Vicki Lyons.
For those here, thank you again to Councilmember Rupert, to Mayor Simpson, and to our city management team. It means a lot to us to have this designation, so thank you so much. All of our record supervisors couldn't be here, but Vicki's here to accept the award, and thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Do a quick photo. No, 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 you're in the photo. You're in the photo, too.
Oh, she wants one, too.
One with her phone.
I had very specific instructions that I must take a photo, and I'm not going to disappoint. And then I will join you.
There we go. Perfect.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Sir, thank you again.
Wonderful. Records, would you like to give a comment as well? You don't have to, just saying if you'd like to.
No, but thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your service to the city as well. I am so excited we have a full house tonight because we have the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Audit Presentation for you all. I hope you all drank your coffee for this evening. All right. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am Deb Nielsen, the Deputy Finance Director here at the city, and I am here tonight to introduce our audit team. As you know, we have to have a financial audit every year. So, we have Chris Telly and Brooke Langford from Forvis Mazars, our auditing firm, to present the results of the 2024 financial audit.
My name is Chris Telly. I'm with the firm of Forvis Mazars. I hope I can live up to that billion. I'm going to try. We met just a little while ago with the Audit Committee, presented the full results of the audit to the Audit Committee, so I will just cover some of the highlights of the audit. I'm happy to take any questions after that, if there are any. But I'd start off by saying that we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the opinion you want to receive. It's a clean opinion, as we say. The term unmodified sometimes catches some people off guard, but it is the best opinion you can receive. The audit included both the audit of the annual comprehensive financial report, as well as the compliance work over the federal grants program, all of which was covered under that clean opinion. There were two findings to report, one a material weakness over capital asset accounting, capital asset reporting. We made one recommendation over that issue. Some of those issues had mostly to do with the new ERP system and getting the proper reports out of the system to agree to the financial records. We had an adjustment that we proposed for 2.5 million that was made by management and is reflected within the annual comprehensive financial report as of December 31, 2024. And then there was one other finding, a lesser degree of a finding called a significant deficiency, that had to do with the calculation of a portion of the net position referred to as the net investment in capital assets. And I will spare you the gory details of getting into the weeds as to what goes into that calculation, but there was simply an error in that calculation in the prior year. It was corrected. It was discovered by management in the current year, the current year being 2024, corrected in the report you have in front of you. And we made one adjustment to reflect the prior year, just to ensure that there wasn't a material misstatement in the prior year. There was not. There was no reissuance that needed to be done, no restatement in this year's financial statements, and those are the only two findings we had this year. With that, I'm happy to take any questions, if there are any.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say, as a member on the Audit Committee, I really appreciated hearing from you how above board our management handled the audit, and particularly Vesta Crook, who went through and did a lot, a lot of work that you said she didn't have to, but she did to make sure that everything is transparent in this audit report. So, my congratulations to Brian Archer, Deborah Nelson, and Vesta for doing a great job working with you this year.
Councilmember Mormon.
Thank you, and I'll just echo that also, being on the Audit Committee. I really appreciate all your work and the service you provide to our city for this very important process, and to our team who is involved in it. And I understand, you know, when we're in the middle of changing systems, it makes it even more complicated, and so appreciate everyone's hard work and patience through that process. And as I said during our Audit Committee, I certainly hope that next year it goes easier because of the work we did this year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Mr. Archer, to yourself and your team, Ms. Nielsen, for all the hard work. I know how much you put into this. As a former member of the Audit Committee, I know how much of a love this is, so thank you for all your hard work and all that you do. All right. Thank you for being here tonight with us. All right. Now, we move into public comment for issues not scheduled on the agenda. So, for those of you who may be new to public comment, I'm just going to lay some quick ground rules. These are for issues not on the agenda. So, if you're here for one of our hearings this evening, please wait until that hearing. You will have an opportunity to speak at that time. If you are here for anything not on the hearing agenda, including items on the consent agenda, resolutions, et cetera, you may come forward now at this time. You have a three-minute limit. We always ask that we respect decorum in the chambers. We always want this to be a welcoming environment where anybody is free to share their thoughts, whatever that may be. So, whether it is for or against, we always request that no applause, no booing, simply just to make sure everyone feels like they have a safe space here. Please keep your comments directed to us at the council, not to other members who may be in chambers or those walking or watching at home. And with that, I will get us started. Ms. Kimberly Honert? I apologize if I mispronounced your last name.
It's Honert.
Honert. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a -- I own a business on 58th and Kipling, and I just have a concern to the park that is to the east of that. I've had a lot of trouble with homeless, cooking meth, and different things like that. We put all that money into the park on Miller Street to make it a safe environment. This is only a few blocks away from that, so I just thought that should be brought to attention. I've had the police officers out there several times. They brought it to my attention that I should come to a city council meeting, so I am doing that to bring it to attention. And the avenue I would like to see brought forward for that park is just to have it trimmed up. There's so many hiding places. There's bushes and stuff, and they all hide back in this one corner. So, I mean, I would even volunteer to help clean this up, just all the trimming and stuff like that, just so there's fewer hiding places for people to hide back there. That's my concern. Just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Gary Schofield.
Yeah, I'm here for a couple reasons. Tonight, I'm using a cane because of an accident I had in front of the greenhouses on 72nd on my bicycle last Friday, which sent me to the emergency room, unfortunately. But it's one of those things that has existed in my neighborhood for quite some time, have been quite a big problem, these abandoned greenhouses and the condemned residents at that location. I was riding through their parking lot because I was forced off the bike path because of people parked on the bike path picking up their children from the charter school across the street. It was only just, you know, an 18-inch or plus deep trench, but it came because of the rains and because the property is poorly managed or not managed at all, and nothing's been done with it. There's a problem there that needs to be corrected, and I know I've talked to several of you about it in the past. I did this most recently at an Arvada Urban Renewal Authority meeting where I was disappointed to find out that we couldn't include the property in that kind of process. Maybe that's something we can do and help. The other problem was accessibility. The problem is with sustainability. Excuse me. We need accessibility. One of the problems we have in my neighborhood, as I just mentioned now, is the railroad tracks, which I'm very happy to hear is maybe we finally got an approval from U.P. to start the underpass construction, and we'll take care of the issue that caused me to have to crash on Friday. The other problem is we have a lot of ditches in Arvada, and we have a lot of communities and neighborhoods were built with one way in, one way out, and they're mainly designed for vehicles and cars. Now, when it comes down to alternate transportation, because I am retired, I've decided to go the e-bike way instead of spending all that money on electric car, because I have a perfectly good 21-year-old Mazda Miata that gets 30 miles to the gallon plus, and I don't see any reason to get a second car in the electric variety. But if you can do something about this whole accessibility issue and the ability to get around without streets, and I will compliment everybody in this room for all you've been doing for alternative transportation. I noticed all the poles that were recently installed along the busy streets to separate the bike paths from the traffic, but that still doesn't mean we on bicycles don't have to ride down streets, as I was the other day going to the library over on Kipling, and cement truck was in the left lane, and some commuter was trying to share my lane and not give me my three-foot variance. So, thank you guys a lot. Appreciate all you do, and got a great city here in Arvada. Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schofield. There we go. Next, we have Ed Tomlinson.
The Origin of Crime and the Value of Prevention. Mayor, council members, thank you for this time. The origin of crime does not begin with violence. It begins small. It begins with minor offenses, ignored warrants, and the slow erosion of respect for the law. Like a virus, it spreads quietly at first, a theft overlooked here, a missed court date there, until it becomes an epidemic that affects every neighborhood in Arvada. If you want to reduce serious crime, you must address the small issues first, infections. That means enforcing accountability for the $2,000 or up to $2,000 misdemeanors, failures to appear, outstanding warrants before they grow into larger problems. Arvada currently has about 1,400 active arrest warrants. Every one of these represents a missed opportunity to respect our court system. We can change that by adopting proactive outreach and targeted safe surrender programs, not blanket amnesty, but structured chances for people to resolve cases voluntarily. It's not about being soft. It's about being smart, curing the problem early rather than treating it late. That is my first request tonight. Take a serious look at the proactive solutions for offenses and warrant resolutions. These small steps prevent a bigger crime and strengthen public confidence in our justice system. Now, my second request, and equally important, is if we expect results, we must give our police department the tools to succeed. Right now, Arvada is short about 15 officers. To attract the retrained qualified officers, they need a 10% salary increase. This is not a luxury. It is an investment in safety, stability, and morale. A fully-staffed police force is our best deterrent to crime, and it costs far less than dealing with the consequences of being understaffed. One, in short, address the small infections, proactive warrant resolution, and early accountability. Two, raise police pay by 10% to fill vacancies and stay competitive. Both steps work together, prevention on one end, protection on the other. That is how you keep Arvada safe and keep our community strong. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. Next, we have Betty Jenlinson?
Jansen.
Jansen.
Sorry, I'm such a poor handover.
No, I apologize. Welcome.
I first of all want to thank the city council for the improvements in the Marge Roberts Park. So, I want to share two quick experiences that you can take credit for for the work you've done with it. I live adjacent to the park. My property backs up to the lot behind the church, which is down from the park. So, in the last week or two, I've had several morning walks, and I'm an advocate for children. So, the mornings that I have seen this small group of mothers with toddlers on the playground has warmed my heart, and I've stopped to chat and even play a little bit. And then after-school hours, I have seen a number of youth enjoying the new basketball facilities. And when I see these teenagers, I'm very aware how this is a vulnerable time for them. They're navigating many challenges, and for them to have a place to come and hang out and play basketball, actually, it contributes to the safety of our community. And as you know, there's a lot of housing there with a lot of children, so thank you for that. My next comment is going to be very brief because I'll have to make up for it when I get five minutes. I want to revisit the proposal of several weeks ago that was made regarding cold weather shelters. And as I understand the proposal, several cities in this area getting together, pooling money to provide cold shelters. And there was a comment made from the council that has confused me, and at some point would like clarification of that comment and what it means. And it was a comment regarding the possible $100,000 that might be available for the city of Arvada, either by paying less into the pot of money that was accumulating or getting a refund. And the comment had to do with wanting some assurance that none of this money would go to Rising. And first of all, I want to clarify that Rising is the name of the church. It's not the name of the program or nonprofit that serves the unhoused. That's Mission Arvada. So, my confusion is, what do I not know about Mission Arvada that would result in a comment that said, "We don't want any money to go to them to repeat what they did last winter"? And I'll follow up later. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Joyce Speckler. Oh, okay. Going to go on past that one. And then Mark Jolinski.
Hello, and thank you. My name is Mark Jolinski, 8215 Garland Drive, Arvada. I'm coming tonight on the adoption of the next round of building and energy codes for Arvada. I'm a registered professional mechanical and fire protection engineer, involved in designing and construction of built environment for over 40 years, mostly in large commercial buildings. I've been involved in the code development and model code level, as well as serving on the code development committee in Denver, and serve my professional societies as code advocacy liaison. I serve on the Arvada Sustainability Action Committee, but I'm not speaking on their behalf. I understand Arvada is on the cusp of adopting the 2024 family of international codes, including the 2024 International Energy Conservation Code. Arvada is obligated by the state of Colorado to include provisions no less stringent than the Model Electrification Ready and Solar Energy Code. The state of Colorado also has next generation of model energy codes available, the Colorado Model Low Energy and Carbon Code, which I'll just call the ML-ECC from here on. It's -- this has been in development for several years, with stakeholder public meetings held during the process that I was part of. It was -- it results in a lower first cost, more flexible, and is less complex than the 2024 IECC, plus the Model Electrification Code and Model Solar Ready Code that you would have to add on to the 2024 IECC. The point of my comments tonight is to advocate for the adoption of this latest and more sustainable energy code. I want to acknowledge that I have reached out to and worked with Kylie Flynn, Chief Building Official of Arvada, and she has expressed, you know, the real-world issues with adopting a new code, new round of codes, under the current timeline. What I would like council to consider is whether there's an opportunity to relax the timeline for adopting the next round of codes. I understand that there's a hard deadline to adopt a wildfire code, but there should be no reason why to tie this in with building energy codes. There's some material impacts, but that has to be dealt with whether you're still on the 18 code or the 24 code. Seems to me these two issues are separable. Stepping up to the 2018 -- from the 2018 to the 24 codes is a big lift no matter what. If Arvada just adopts 2024 codes plus the several-year-old electrification code, it's possible within a year or so, you'll have to adopt this ML-ECC anyway when you adopt the National Electric Code after July of 2026. That would cause another round of all this. I'm really recommending that you go through this just once, and in addition, this will -- this new code will put you in line with the goals of the Climate Action Sustainability Plan, which is a whole other subject. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. That's all the signups I have for non-hearing-related public comment. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of this evening, and we have six items on the consent agenda. They are R25-086, a resolution adopting the amended fee schedule for rights-of-way work permits and services pursuant to Chapter 78, Public Improvements of the Arvada City Code; R25-094, a resolution adopting the amended administrative fee schedule for Building Safety Division permits and services pursuant to Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Arvada City Code; R25-095, a resolution adopting the amended fee schedule for land use pursuant to Chapter 74, Planning and Development of the Arvada City Code; R25-096, a resolution authorizing a third amendment to the lease agreement between the city of Arvada and T-Mobile West Tower LLC, formerly Voice Stream PCS II Corporation; R25-097, a resolution authorizing a master license agreement by and between the city of Arvada and MetroNet Fiber; and finally, R25-098, a resolution authorizing a master license agreement between -- by and between the city of Arvada and Intrepid Fiber. Councilmember Rupert.
I move that the consent items numbers R25086 through R2598 be approved.
All right. Fall of council will cast their votes. Councilmember Ambrose, you wish to speak? There we go. All right. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, we have three resolutions this evening. I will open R25-099, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada and the Church Ditch Water Authority, allowing the city to place a water drainage pipe and to make occasional discharge of dechlorinated potable water into the church ditch. Ms. Stoll, I believe you have this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Jaclyn Rhodes, Infrastructure Director, I'm going to go ahead and take this item this evening.
Thank you.
This IGA allows the city to install and use a drain This IGA allows the city to install and use a drainage pipe to discharge potable water from the Sims Tank to the church ditch to conduct maintenance. This pipe will remain, and this IGA and license terms will be perpetual to allow future use for our maintenance or emergency construction work activities. The Arvada team recommends that City Council approve R-25-099.
Thank you. Just to clarify, because I know it's potable water, but there's nothing in this water that could serve as a public health contaminant or environmental contaminant of any kind?
That's correct. So typically, water in this tank is distributed in our distribution system, high-quality, clean water to the tap. In this case, it would only be used and dechlorinated and allow, to allow that discharge to the ditch.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. I think you just answered my question, but the water will be dechlorinated?
That's correct. And while the maintenance activities are planned for later this year, there's provisions within this IGA and license agreement for any future maintenance activities that we would make sure to coordinate with Church Ditch in advance of.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no questions, I'll accept a motion from the council. Councilmember Pfeifer.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you very much.
I move that Resolution 25-099, A Resolution Authorizing an Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City of Arvada and the Church Ditch Water Authority, Allowing the City to Place a Water Drainage Pipe and to Make Occasional Discharge of Dec chlorinated Potable Water Into the Ditch, Church Ditch be approved.
Thank you. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, I'll open R-25-100, A Resolution Adopting the 2026 Capital Improvement Fund Budget and Allocating for Specific Projects in 2026. Mr. Archer, do you have this item?
Your Honor, we had a little bit of an error in terms of organizing our resolutions. So these two resolutions will go with 10D on your agenda, which is the ordinance appropriating funds for fiscal year 2026. We were just going to open them all together and take care of them all at once.
Okay, so I'll move these two items to later in the agenda.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, then, we have no more resolutions this evening, so that's nice. We have no first readings, so that's going to take us into public. Wait. Okay, my agenda must be out of date. I have no first readings listed here.
Do you, let me get you a copy really quick. Or Randy, do you have the copy?
I'm ready to go.
All right, please open first reading. Thank you. Can I get an updated agenda?
I move that CB-25-026, An Ordinance Repealing and Reenacting Article Eleven of Chapter Fifty-four Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Arvada City Code be approved on first reading, order published in full, and a public hearing date be set for November eighteenth, 2025, at 6:15 p.m.
Thank you. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. And you're right, now that I think about it, I recall seeing the first reading in the packet, but I will take an updated agenda, please. And so with that, I will now open the public hearings. I will open first CB-25-021, An Ordinance Amending Various Sections of Chapter One-O-Two Utilities of the Arvada City Code Pertaining to Water User Rates and Bimonthly Service Charges. Ordinance Number 4907. Ms. Rhodes, you have this item?
Thank you, council. The ordinance before you will adjust water rates and bimonthly service fees for 2026. The attached ordinance will increase water volumetric rates by five percent and bimonthly service fees by eighteen-point-three percent for an overall revenue increase of six-point-nine percent for 2026. This will increase a typical in-city, single-family water bill by fifty-two dollars and twenty-one cents per year, or eight dollars and seventy cents per bimonthly bill, or four dollars and thirty-five cents per month. Over the course of three workshops that we've held this year, the city team presented to council foundational information about our utility financial strategies and a series of revenue increase scenarios for the water fund. We requested direction about how to best provide assistance to customers who are also struggling to pay their bill. At the final workshop on August twelfth, the city team presented four revenue increase scenarios for the water fund, and updating the water rates and bimonthly service fees for 2026. And at that workshop, the city team received direction about which to bring forward for adoption. Additional revenue adjustments from, enables major water system reinvestments and capacity building projects to proceed in accordance with a schedule laid out in our master planning work that was directed by the City Council's strategic plan. The 2026 budget for the Water Enterprise Fund includes new revenues of approximately two million, seven-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, which will be used primarily towards paying for debt service and capital projects. Additionally, this revenue from existing customers is not used to pay for growth-related projects. System development charges are assessed to new developments to pay for growth-related work. The city's infrastructure department continues to prepare for investments in operations and infrastructure as part of our ongoing commitment to continue to provide reliable water, sewer, and stormwater drainage services to our community. This work supports the infrastructure priority area of the City Council's strategic plan, specifically to provide the community with safe, resilient, high-quality water supply. The team's presentation of the requested revenue increase for 2026 to the water rate and fee schedule also aligns with the principle that the city maintains utility rates at the lowest practical levels. For customers that are struggling to pay their bills, we offer hardship credits, bill equalizations, and payment arrangements. We're also working on a new initiative for 2026, where Arvada utility customers who already qualify for the Low-Income Energy Assistance Program would become eligible to receive a twenty-five-dollar credit per bimonthly bill. This action aligns with the infrastructure work system services in the City Council's strategic plan, and the Arvada team recommends that City Council approve CB-25-021.
Thank you very much. So obviously, there's no applicant. I will open it to... Well, is anyone in chambers this evening like to speak on this item at this time? We have no signups. Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of this hearing and open it to council questions or action. Councilmember Davis.
Does council have any questions or comments? If not, then I will make the motion. I move that CB-25-021, An Ordinance Amending Various Sections of Chapter One-O-Two Utilities of the Arvada City Code Pertaining to Water Users Rates and Bimonthly Service Charge be approved on final reading number 4907, and ordered published by title only.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon, you wish to speak?
I do. Appreciate the team's work on this, and every year, we go through this process now and have numerous workshops that educate us on the needs and how you have calculated, determined what the different options are for us to consider, and really appreciate those conversations and education. And I, most recently, with Councilmember Rupert, and I know others, went on tours of the Arvada Water Treatment Facility, and that facility is past its prime, I would say, and in need of replacement. And so we are going under that process right now to replace it. And while that is not the only thing that this funding that we are, you know, acquiring through these fees will be paying for, it's an important component of that. As we only have two water treatment facilities, our main one, the Ralston one, is larger and newer, but we need to have the Arvada Treatment Facility for our peak times of the year and as an emergency backup. And so I appreciate all the education that your staff have done to walk us through all these needs and how these increases that we have to go through are helping to build a better system for Arvada. And obviously, this system is, it's old. And we've got to do this work now, or we're going to be in deep trouble and have to pay much more later. So while this is a very difficult and challenging decision every year to talk about raising rates, it is a necessary one, and I will be definitely supporting this. And also greatly appreciate the work your team has done on the economic assistance piece as well, and looking forward to the new leap twenty-five-dollar credit on the bimonthly bill, and for those that need that as well. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Marriott, you are next.
Yeah, I'll be voting no on this. And my reasons should be no surprise to anybody who's watched any of the workshops leading up to this. You know, Arvada and its water system has maybe not completely unusual, but we do have essentially two water systems. We have one water system that feeds most of the town that is fed by gravity from the treatment plant all the way out to the tap in your home. We also have part of our system, and a good-sized part of it, where water has to come out of the treatment plant and then be pumped uphill into storage tanks that provide the head pressure to provide water at the taps. It's absolutely more expensive to operate that part of the system than the other part of the system. But yet, these rates are the same for everybody. Both the monthly system charge, as well as the usage rates, are the same for everybody. And I find it to be counter to some of the people who should also share, get to share the city's philosophy of utility rates at the lowest practical level. Some people are paying more in Arvada than it costs for, to water to be delivered to them, so that others can pay less. And I realize it's not a significant amount, but it is real, and it is there. And I think it's a problem that the city team needs to solve one of these years. And until they do, I would encourage, you know, I encourage the city to continue working on it and to come up with an accurate figure, a reasonable figure for what that may be, and put that difference in either the monthly service charge or the rate, either one. It doesn't really matter. But to treat the consumers of water fairly, so that if it costs more for water to show up at your house, you pay a little more. And if it costs less for water to show up at your house, you pay a little less. So that's why I'll be voting no.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, and I appreciate all the work that has gone into this. When I first came to the city of Arvada, I actually participated in the City Citizen Capital Improvement Project Planning Program, and it was amazing. There were a lot of us, and we really went through a deep dive into the city's operations. And one of the things that really struck me that was funny was there was somebody on the west side who only wanted to pay for the water, the infrastructure that was in his neighborhood. And I said, "That's fantastic. Do you know how much concrete pipe costs?". And he said, "Well, how much can it be? It can only be like, maybe, what, a hundred dollars a foot?". And I said, "Okay, so how many feet of pipe are there in your neighborhood?". And then, let's look at, somebody has to dig up the pipe, somebody, we have to buy the pipe, we have to place the pipe, then we have to test the pipe. There's a lot that goes into it. You just don't plop pipe in the ground and hope that it works. And so I casually estimated it, I think at the time, to be about three thousand dollars a linear foot. And the city said, "Oh, no, it's much more than that". So yes, you can pay your fair share in your part, but by making it equitable across the city, when there is a catastrophe in certain parts of the city, we spread that cost out, so that not everybody gets hit with a big bill at the same time. And I think that's what really the team looked into, and utilities across the state do, especially for water, because water is king. I think that the approach that staff is taking is great. Also, infrastructure gets old. I think you've heard me say this mantra before. There's pipe in the ground right now that's as old as I am. And so I don't necessarily perform like I did when I was first born. And so some of this pipe and infrastructure has to be maintained, and to maintain it and to have the best possible water quality, we have to have the best possible technology. And so to do that, we are building a new treatment plant that's going to meet those needs. And until that plant is built, we're going to do the best we can with what we have to work with to make sure that we have safe drinking water across the city. And we're going to provide it in a way and in a manner that is the most equitable that we can do right now, so that everyone has the opportunity, when we have a major break, hopefully we never do that, especially with our wastewater pipe, that your neighborhood's not hit, or you personally are not hit with a huge repair or replacement bill. So I will be supporting this, because I believe that the way that we're billing today and the way that we are financing this project is the best and most responsible process that we can put together.
Councilmember Pfeifer.
Yeah, I think the, I appreciate the team putting this together. You know, the pumping that Mr. Marriott was referring to is to the northwest corner of our city, which is the highest point of the city, which we, everyone benefits off the pressure, because you start at the top, pressure goes down. But also, I think he fails to remember and recall that almost every metro district up there put fifty-five mils of debt to pay for that infrastructure. And they're paying, every resident in that area is paying for that pump, those pipes, those roads, with fifty-five mils out of every household. So I don't think it's fair to spread it. I think the way we're handling it is fine. I think that infrastructure has been compensated and paid for by the residents, and double-dipping on those residents out west is completely unequitable or fair to them as they already paid for the infrastructure. So again, appreciate the staff looking at this and getting to the solution, and I'm sure we'll talk about it again next year.
Thank you very much. With that, all votes are cast. That vote passes six to one, with Councilmember Marriott being a dissenting vote. Next, I will open CB-25-022, An Ordinance Amending Section One-O-Two-206 of Chapter One-O-Two Utilities of the Arvada City Code Pertaining to Wastewater User Rates and Bimonthly Service Charges, and Section One-O-Two-355 of Chapter One-O-Two Utilities of the Arvada City Code Pertaining to Stormwater User Rates. Ordinance Number 4908. Ms. Rhodes.
Thank you. The ordinance before you will adjust the wastewater and stormwater rates for 2026. This will increase wastewater rates by twelve percent, with no change to the bimonthly service fee. The overall revenue increase will be ten-point-five percent for 2026. This will increase a typical in-city, single-family wastewater bill by forty-three dollars and twenty cents per year, or in other words, seven dollars and twenty cents per bimonthly bill, or three dollars and sixty cents per month. Infrastructure is also presenting a stormwater rate increase of six percent in 2026. This will increase the typical in-city, single-family bill by four dollars and five cents per year, or sixty-eight cents per bimonthly bill, or thirty-four cents per month. Similar to the water rates and fees, the team presented a series of revenue scenarios over the course of multiple workshops and received direction about what to bring forward for adoption. The 2026 budget for the Wastewater Enterprise Fund includes new revenues of approximately one million, nine-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand, which will be used primarily towards paying for debt service and capital projects. And also included in this increase is the eight percent increase in our rates to metro water recovery charges for the treatment of the city's wastewater. And for stormwater, the 2026 fund scenario would provide new revenues of approximately two-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand, which will primarily be used for drainage improvement projects. The city team will return to City Council on January thirteenth for a workshop on the Stormwater Fund. Will present background and discuss establishing financial sustainability for this fund. This recommended action aligns with the Infrastructure Work System Services within the City Council's strategic plan, and the city team recommends that City Council approve CB-25-022.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ambrose.
If there's no further discussion, I'd like to make the motion.
All yours? Oh, the public comment. Is there anyone for public comment here on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. And then, one quick comment I will make on this item is that the workshop we had on this was on August twelfth. That is available on YouTube. You can find it. If you want more of a deep dive on the different projects we're trying to tackle, what these rates will be going for, et cetera. And just so everyone knows, this is an enterprise fund, so water pays for water. We cannot reallocate those funds to other project lines. It's not possible. It's not legal. So I always try to share that with folks, because usually, I know it can be a bit of a surprise when you get your water bill, but I hope it helps create a bit of clarity on why these things are happening and what they're going to do for our community. With that, Councilmember Ambrose.
I move that CB-25-022, An Ordinance Amending Section One-O-Two-206 of Chapter One-O-Two Utilities of the Arvada City Code Pertaining to Wastewater User Rates and Bimonthly Service Charges, and Section One-O-Two-355 of Chapter One-O-Two Utilities of the Arvada City Code Pertaining to Stormwater User Rates be approved on final reading, numbered 4908, and ordered published by title only.
Thank you. All votes are cast, and that passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, I will open CB-25-023, An Ordinance Prohibiting the Installation of Graywater Treatment Works and the Use of Graywater Within the City of Arvada. Ordinance Number 4909. Ms. Rhodes, again.
Thank you. Tonight, council action is requested on a new ordinance to ensure our compliance with State Regulation eighty-six and House Bill Twenty-four thirteen-sixty. state regulation 86 and House Bill 241362. This ordinance proposes, prohibits the installation or use of gray water or gray water systems within the city and the city's water system boundaries. Gray water is wastewater generated from bathroom sinks, bathtubs, showers, and laundry machines that can be reused for non-potable purposes such as toilet flushing or subsurface irrigation. Regulation 86, adopted by the Colorado Water Quality Control Commission, establishes the minimum standards for gray water treatment works and gray water use. House Bill 241362 transfers the oversight of household gray water treatment works and gray water use to counties and municipalities. Jurisdictions that do not opt out must immediately establish and manage a full gray water control program with permitting, inspections, enforcement, training, public education, and inter-agency coordination. We recognize that water savings could be realized by residents that install gray water treatment works. And that through House Bill 241362, the regulatory and public health risks must be managed by the city. After careful evaluation, assessing resource capacity as well as uncertainties as to whether this use is allowable under the city's 1965 contract with Denver Water for our raw water that explicitly prohibits successive uses of water by Arvada or any customers in Arvada, the team is recommending to opt out of HB 241362. This action does not close the door to a gray water program in the future. As interest in gray water systems across the state and Arvada continue to grow, we will continue to weigh the costs and benefits of creating a new local gray water control program. If those future conditions change, HB 241362 allows the city to partially or wholly allow the installation of gray water treatment works and gray water systems at any time by passing a new ordinance. So due to the operational impacts, low demand for these systems currently, and that it's not yet confirmed that this use is allowable in our city's raw water contract, and that there are other priorities that are being developed in the city's climate and sustainability action plan that have the potential to yield a greater impact, the Arvada team recommends that city council approve CB 25023.
Thank you. We do have public comment this evening on this item. If you plan to comment on this item, I will quickly ask you to raise your right hand. All right. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right. Please come on down, Mr. Mark Jalinski. Name and address for the public record and yeah, same rules as before.
Hi, Mark Jalinski, 8215 Garland Drive. I, again, mechanical professional engineer. I serve on the Arvada Sustainability Action Committee, but not speaking on their behalf. I'm, I'm opposed to the prohibition, the outright prohibition of gray water in Arvada. Gray water implementation is, is well understood with many case studies and well-vetted codes and standards, including the, the current, actually, the current plumbing code, 2018 plumbing code, and the soon-to-be-adopted 2024 plumbing codes, as well as CDPE regulations. You would not be going into this alone, on your own. There's plenty of backup for you. I, I absolutely understand some of the concerns. It's something new. It's one more thing to be adding into your, the mix here. But I, so I'd like for council to consider at least a mandate to actively study the issue. Granted, there was, it's acknowledged that Arvada can indeed look at this in the future and will look at this in the future. I understand that and believe that. But I would like to see it be a little bit more proactively addressed. I would suggest that, that study could include, you know, differentiating between non-potable water reuse, toilet flushing, processed water, and subsurface landscape absorption, the simplest version of which is a laundry to landscape type of arrangement. You know, clarify the requirements of Denver Water. You must do that. That is absolutely an issue. There's concerns that there's, that this, you know, 60-year-old contract that was written in another time doesn't allow for, you know, reuse of, of the water. However, so, deal with that. That's another reason why look at, you know, at the landscaping, the subsurface landscaping application, because that's water that was going to go in the dirt anyway. Whether a gallon of water comes through the meter and goes down the toilet and another gallon of water goes to the meter and gets applied to landscape, that water that's being applied to landscape has the same return. That's, that's Denver Water's issue. They want to see a certain amount of that water returned because they have downstream obligations. What goes on the ground, goes on the ground. Wouldn't it be nice if we only had to use one gallon, you know, through the laundry, maybe through a shower, that's another issue, and then onto landscape? It's only one gallon in that case. You really should, of course, look at neighboring jurisdictions, many of which are adopting this, and, you know, really identify separate permitting and development fees perhaps for this in order to cover the additional cost that Denver, our, Arvada staff would indeed see. So thank you, and again, looking for a thoughtful implementation of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give public comment on this issue? Seeing none, I will close public comment and open it to council questions and/or action. Councilmember Ambrose.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask that this is really about the gray water treatment system? Like if you were to put in an automated system, that's what we're prohibiting? We're not prohibiting, like, my grandmother never connected her sink because she grew up in the depression and she had a bucket and she used it in her garden. You can do that if you want to. We're just saying, like, a system to be installed so that, so there wasn't a bucket, it happened automatically, that's what we don't have capacity to oversee right now, and we're not closing the door on it. We just can't do it on this timeline.
That's correct. These are sophisticated engineered systems that are currently allowable under our plumbing code that we would be changing with approval of this ordinance. So these engineered systems, modern-day systems are what we're recommending, that we do not permit and approve at this time.
Okay. But if this, like, the sustainability committee wanted to take up water use, they could take it up and study it and bring it before council?
Absolutely. Our sustainability coordinator is well aware of this topic and again, has been looking at this as well as other conservation measures as part of our climate and sustainability action plan that we'll come back to speak to council about at a future workshop. So it's something that the committee could continue to examine alongside staff as we look at cost benefits.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. If there's less water, wastewater dilution going to metro, would that increase our, our BOD and then therefore the strength of our wastewater? Would that increase our charges from, to metro?
You're absolutely correct. The calculation of our charges includes both flow and concentration components in terms of biological oxygen demand. Right now, in terms of the context of gray water systems, because of such low use or known permitted systems in the city already, I can't anticipate it would make a, a major impact, but that's certainly something we could look out for as we routinely monitor the, the quality or the concentration of sewage in our system today.
Yeah, I think I recall this conversation during water conservation, when we were conserving water and flushing toilets a little less. And, and our, our, the strength of our, of our wastewater was a little stronger because we didn't have as much dilution. So that's just what I'm concerned about, that we might, our charges for metro might increase and then therefore we would have more of a wastewater increase to our, to our service people, to our.
Certainly, it's a component of both and something that we could routinely monitor at this point. Our team isn't concerned about the concentrations realized under our current conservation efforts, so I don't anticipate that gray water, at least in today's demands, would significantly impact that.
Thank you. Councilmember Rupert.
Do we have any measure or idea of what, how many current systems are out there, understanding that they'd be unpermitted systems?
I'm looking at my team to make sure I don't misspeak, but I, I think it's on the order of tens? Current systems. I'm not aware of how many current systems we have. I know there's a few. Yeah. Zero current systems that are permitted in Arvada.
Well, we know that there are zero systems permitted. Do we have a sense of how many folks out there might have such systems for any reason? Three?
I think I'm hearing from our, our staff that Denver Water has noted three in the past years. So again, I, I don't have exact numbers for you, but our, everything we're hearing from our research is that the demand is pretty low at this time. But there's an increasing interest across the region in these systems.
Sure, with cost increase and wanting to conserve, I understand that. I guess my next question is, before these changes to legislation, what was the permitting process?
I'm going to invite our water quality administrator, Evy Rhodes, to come up and speak to that answer because she's more familiar with the requirements of Reg 86.
Ms. Rhodes, you can come up here. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Rhodes, the water quality administrator. As far as permitting for, within the city for gray water systems, that would actually be a little bit more on the building code side, and since we've never had a request for one, I don't know that we had much of a process for it. So I honestly don't know what we were doing.
So the health, the Colorado Health Department had no process? Nobody else was looking out for this sort of thing either?
I do think it was flying a little under the radar because of the limited use in some of the cities, or like Denver Water, that utility that had an official program. They had like a permitting program associated with it that the city and county of Denver oversaw, but it was sort of incorporated in context by the International Plumbing Code that we used, but nobody was really asking for it. And I think people weren't really thinking about it a whole lot until this House bill came along and kind of said, make a program, this is on you now to oversee, and if you don't opt out, then you're automatically opting in. And then it kind of made all the utilities sort of.
So presumably, this is the legislature trying to anticipate demand? Is that?
I think maybe encourage it. I, I'm not totally sure.
Okay.
May I add on to that? Did the legislature provide any resources to help cities update their codes and systems?
No.
Oh, please.
We, yes, we call that an unfunded mandate, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rhodes. We appreciate you. Any other questions from council on this item? Seeing none, I will accept a motion. I'm going to have to start just calling on you guys.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis.
I move that CB 25-023, an ordinance prohibiting the installation of gray water treatment works and the use of gray water within the city of Arvada be approved on final reading numbered 4909 and ordered published by title only.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon, you wish to speak to the item?
I do, thank you. I will be supporting this day, but per the conversations we've been having and also the comments made by Mr. Jalinski during public comment, I think it's important that we continue as a city to look into this and how we might be able to adopt it in the future. Water conservation is continuing to be an important aspect of what we do here in the city and, and needs to be on our forefront of our actions that we take with our, our water resources. So I, I would hope that we continue to look and see how this can be one of the tools in our toolbox. I know we'll be having, in the early part of the year, we're having conversations around our climate action sustainability plan, and so I hope that it can be part of that conversation as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rupert, you also wish to speak?
Thank you, yes. I'll be supporting the motion primarily because our contract with Denver Water requires that of us. And while it is a very old contract, it's an enormous asset to the city and the, and our residents. And so certainly I don't want to run afoul of that contract. On the other hand, I think it's worthwhile studying both that issue and whether or not we can really appropriately implement this for those who want to do it within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Bless you. With that, all votes are cast, and that passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, I will be opening CB 25-024, along with the two resolutions, R25-101 and R25-100. So that is CB 25-024, an ordinance appropriating funds for fiscal year 2026, ordinance number 4910, R25-101, a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year 2026, and R25-100, a resolution adopting the 2026 capital improvement budget, fund budget and allocating for specific projects in 2026. Mr. Archer, you have these items.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, you have in front of you an ordinance appropriating funds for fiscal year 2026. The total ordinance is in the amount of $382,736,177. As council is well aware, the budget process is a year-long effort provided by the team and yourselves to create direction for how we are going to spend the city's assets in the next year. This year's process started in February with city council's retreat, continued in June when finance and CMO updated the 10-year models and did a detailed review of current and previous revenue estimates, also updating the 10-year CIP model. In August, as Ms. Rhodes already spoke to, the infrastructure work system presented recommendations for the city's water, wastewater, and stormwater fees. In September, the budget document was provided to the city council and posted to the city website. This document includes the city manager's transmittal letter, which provides an overview of the total budget, an overview of the budget document, and major changes and issues associated with the proposed expenditures. Finally, there was a budget workshop held last week, which included what was ultimately being proposed by the city manager, what was not funded, and what areas need to be addressed in the upcoming years. Staff is recommending approval of the budget ordinance for 2026.
Thank you. I'll open it to council questions. Public comment? That's right. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? All right. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Council questions? Councilmember Pfeiffer.
If there's no questions, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. You have all three.
I move that council bill.
Quickly, Ms. Morris, do you want us to vote on all three separately?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thought so. Okay, thank you.
I think I got them in order. They're kind of messed up in the bookmarks. I think I got them. I move that council bill, 25-024, an ordinance appropriating funds for fiscal year 2026 be approved on final reading numbered 4910 and ordered published by title only.
All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
I'm going to go to resolution 25100.
Perfect. Go ahead and do that one.
I move that resolution 25-100, a resolution adopting the 2026 capital improvement fund budget and allocating for specific projects in 2026 be approved.
All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. The last item, please.
I move that resolution 25-101, a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year 2026 be approved.
All right. Thank you. All votes are cast. That also passes seven to zero. Thank you very, very much. Next, I'll move it into CB 25-025, an ordinance certifying the city of Arvada mill levy for 2025 for the Board of County Commissioners for Jefferson and Adams Counties, ordinance number 4911. Mr. Archer.
Thank you, Mayor and council. What you have in front of you is an ordinance to approve the mill levy for 2025. The purpose of this ordinance is to establish the city's mill levy for the valuation year 2025. The 2026 proposed budget estimates approximately $10,380,747 will be collected in 2026 based on the mill levy of 4.31 mills. There is no change to the mill levy from the previous year, and in fact, this mill levy has not changed since 1993. The mill levy will be used to assess all property within the city for taxes to be collected in 2026 for the valuation year of 2025, and the Arvada team recommends approval of council bill 25-025.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Councilmember Ambrose.
I'll make the motion if there's no questions.
There are no questions.
I move that CB 25-025, an ordinance certifying the city of Arvada mill levy for 2025 for the Board of County Commissioners for Jefferson and Adams County be approved on final reading numbered 4911 and ordered published by title only.
Thank you very much. All votes are cast, and that passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. All right, folks, I know we're heading into the main event here, so I'm going to call a five-minute recess. Get your water, stretch your legs. That way we can come back everybody fresh and go through it together. All right, five-minute recess.
Welcome back, everybody. Good break, good break. I know it's a bit longer than five minutes, but I appreciate all of you and the great conversation that we were able to have in the interim. All right. With that, I will now open R 25-102, a resolution by the City Council for the City of Arvada, Colorado, to amend the 2014 Arvada Comprehensive Plan land use designation pertaining to 6800 Kilmer Street from mixed-use residential emphasis to industrial office. And Ms. Sargent, I believe you're opening this issue?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The question has again arisen over whether City Council has authority to hear an application to amend the comprehensive plan. Section 5.3 of the Comprehensive Plan states that all comprehensive plan amendments shall be considered by City Council. Additionally, Section 8.121E4 of the Land Development Code states amendments to the Comprehensive Plan shall be subject to City Council adoption or approval. Although it is unusual for a Comprehensive Plan amendment to go before council without a concurrent zoning request, staff has thoroughly reviewed the legal considerations, and neither the city code nor Comprehensive Plan designates the Planning Commission as the final authority on such amendments. Therefore, the applicant has requested a rehearing before the City Council to reconsider their proposal to amend the Comprehensive Plan designation from mixed-use residential emphasis to industrial office. In accordance with City Council Rules of Procedure 4L, the council has voted to grant the request. By doing so, City Council is now exercising its discretion to reexamine a complex matter with potential implications for land use planning, economic development, and legal risk.
Thank you. Mr. Smetana?
Thank you. I will just add a couple of points, and these were things that you did hear the last time you heard this case. But this property has been zoned light industrial since it was annexed to the city in 1982. And as you are aware, the Planning Commission initially denied the request last year, as did the council at that time. We did renotice for this particular hearing, and we provided the notice through publication in a local paper, mail notices, and signs posted on the property. And we have received the signposting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. We do have our staff, Julia Duncan, here as well, and members of our infrastructure team to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. And before we open, I just quickly want to confirm we are here for strictly the comp plan amendment. We are not looking at the site plan or the proposal this evening.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I will invite the applicant up to make their presentation. Quickly, raise your -- anybody wishing to speak on this item tonight, whether you are public or applicant, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do? Okay. Thank you very much. Name and address for the public record, and you may begin when ready.
Thank you. My name is Scott Clark. My address is 6055 East Mineral Drive in Centennial, Colorado. I'm an attorney with the firm Clark Hill, representing the petitioner, Chelten LLC. Also with me this evening and presenting this evening are David Schneider, who is with Chelten, and Brent Anderson, who is the CEO of ReSite, which is a brownfield redeveloper. Brownfield redevelopers specialize in developing properties that are contaminated with environmental concerns. And Mr. Anderson has a JD from the University of Denver and is a licensed attorney, and has a master's of engineering from the Colorado School of Mines, and has been in the business of cleanup and revitalization of contaminated properties for over 30 years. Thank you for entertaining this reconsideration of our proposal. We very much appreciate the opportunity to come before City Council again and present this site and this request. Of course, our request is to modify the Comprehensive Plan in order to re-designate the property light industrial and office under the Comprehensive Plan, which would be consistent with the long-time zoning of light industrial for the property. Currently, the property is identified as mixed-use residential in the Comprehensive Plan. All right. This slide shows the property, which is outlined in the dashed lines. It is the irregular-shaped triangle. It is a difficult and complicated property for redevelopment. The two sides of the triangle to the south and west and to the north are bounded by significant waterways, being Ralston Creek and the Croke Canal. The eastern boundary is on industrial property. The south end of that eastern boundary is the city's own facility with outdoor storage. In particular, it has stockpiles of materials backed up to the property line and a couple of Quonset hut-type buildings backed up to the property line and other industrial activities, heavy industrial activities across the property. The northern portion of the eastern boundary is all light industrial, developed with light industrial buildings. As testimony indicated at our prior hearing, there are regular deliveries and pickups by heavy trucks through that area for those properties. And then the school district has its bus facility to the west at the corner of 68th and Indiana. All of those factors make this a difficult property to develop, and in particular, make it impractical to develop as residential. It also has access issues. There's only one road accessing the property, which is 68th Avenue, which runs right down the middle of the industrial property and right past the city's own heavy industrial property. That means that ingress and egress for residential development would be extremely difficult. It also creates problems for fire access to the property. As was indicated, the property has been zoned as industrial for approximately 40 years. In 2005, the Comprehensive Plan was amended, and at that time, the property was designated for mixed-use residential. There was no change to zoning at the time. Comprehensive Plan was amended in 2014 again. It continued to be mixed-use residential with no change to the zoning of the property. In 2020, the city amended the zoning plan and changed the zoning of this property from PUD industrial to light industrial, but didn't make any change to the Comprehensive Plan. So this creates a problem for developing the property. Right now, the property cannot be developed because industrial use zoning says that you cannot have residential use. And Comprehensive Plan designation of mixed-use residential says that you have to have predominantly residential use of the property. So there is nothing that can be developed here because you violate either the zoning code or the Comprehensive Plan by developing. And the zoning code says that in order to get a development plan approved, you have to comply with the Comprehensive Plan. So there are several criteria to consider with respect to a modification of the Comprehensive Plan. I'm going to back up just. But there are overarching themes in the Comprehensive Plan. First of all, the Comprehensive Plan asserts that there must be an emphasis on integrating economic growth with neighborhood vitality and with all transportation modes, streets, transit, commuter rail, bicycle, pedestrian, to complete and connect Arvada. This property has a problem with that. There isn't a good connection for residential development at this property to the rest of the city. As we'll show in a little bit, there isn't good access to public transportation. As I've shown, there isn't good access in and out just for individual cars, and it's not a good place for pedestrians because of all of the industrial property immediately to the east, which is the main access road, main access point in and out. The Comprehensive Plan also states that you must -- there must be wise governance and current and future land uses that generate enough revenue to provide a high level of municipal services. City economic development programs, zoning, signage, and permitting processes must encourage business development while preserving the community's integrity. This can be achieved through an appropriate balance of residential and commercial development. So it's -- these provisions say that what we need is smart development, smart transportation, smart residential development. This site does not make sense for residential development. In fact, residential development is not possible at this site, as we'll show tonight. Moving on to policies in the Comprehensive Plan, Policy L 3.1 discusses designated mixed-use areas. And it states that these areas should provide a range of retail, business, civic, cultural, and residential opportunities. Again, that's not possible here. To access this property, you have to go through heavy industry. It's the only way in and out. It's not practical to put residential there. It's not practical to put commercial or retail there. The only practical use is light industrial. Policy 3.1 also focuses on transport issues and making basically walkable, livable spaces. That can't happen here. It simply does not have the kind of access in and out to provide that. It doesn't have the internal space to provide that. The natural character of this site, given what is located to the east, is industrial. All right. I'm going to turn over the podium to David Schneider now, who will talk about some of the plans for the site.
All right. I can't read that at all. I bet you most people can't read that either. It's so small. I'm not going to read everything on there. I'm going to go through the items to delineate the most important issues. We started off in 2022 with this project, and to maximize the site, planners who were working on the project came up with 557 spots, and that's the 2022 plan on the top. And if you see nothing else in that picture, you can see how it's intensely developed in the 2022 and less developed in the 2025. We had a large building for leasing the spots. It was over 1,000 square feet. We had a detention pond that was predicated on gravel driveways, gravel roadways, and gravel in the front of the project where the fire truck would enter. We had minimum buffers around the site. Landscaping was only 28%. And we were planting numerous trees throughout the site. We took a look at this again later on to get this project moving because it is an intense usage and still make it profitable. We were able to reduce the number of spaces by 202, so it's 355 now. And to screen the site, which was an issue that came up the last time we were before the Planning Council and the City Council, we're adding a seven-foot-tall opaque fence around the whole developed portion of the site. So only where you see roadways, where the RV park, RVs would be parked, is where we would put the fence, around that property. And all the other areas are going to be left the way they are now. No improvement. It's going to be all-natural. And we're going to enhance it by adding a huge number of trees. We've reduced the building by over 1,000 square feet. It's now 240. It's a bare minimum of a building. The detention pond was increased, and it'll probably have to be increased again because we have since learned that the fire department is requesting paved roadways. It creates all kinds of issues for the civil engineers, but it's not an impossible task. Landscaping, we increased it by 25%. It's actually bigger, much larger than that because that was done initially. It's probably closer to 30 or 40%. And the berm heights around the southern, I guess you'd call it the southwestern portion, the curvilinear part of the project to the south, we had berms there undulating between the trees. We increased those berms to around six feet for most of them. So we increased the number of plantings for southern and the southern border by 115, increased the northern planting buffer by 15 feet. It increases western planting buffer by 70 feet. So the purpose of all this goes back to a planning meeting we had with the city planners. And they discussed some issues that they felt should be addressed. And while they are site issues and not related to the -- specifically related to the amendment to the comp plan, they do affect it because if you have a site that doesn't work for the neighbors, you know, why approve it? So we came up with a simple seven-foot sample fencing. It's going to be made of cedar because that's the most durable, and it's easier to replace and maintain. We revised the southern border, doubling the number of trees. Oh, yeah. Okay, thanks. 27 of the 64 are evergreen, and the berm height increased. They have 4.7, but it's actually almost six feet. I'm going to run through these really fast, the next slides, because when we talked to the planners, they said there are two things that we should probably look at. And that is, can we increase the buffer around all sides of the project, and especially on the southern side? So they wanted to increase it from 240 to 300. The financials just don't work. You can't -- you can't get enough RVs or anything in there to make the pro forma work. It's just not feasible. So what they came up with is what you see. And what we decided to do, and I'm just going to present this quickly, is we have a view analysis that was actually presented a while ago. And it's looking from different locations across the project, and it's looking at what the neighborhood would see. This happens to be -- get my notes here. This is from across Ralston Creek. It's about halfway down the northern border of the project, looking southeast. You can see some off-site buildings in the distance on the left side of the screen. And I'm not sure what it is on the right side. I can't really see from here. And the next slide, this is the proposed. And we have Ralston Creek beyond that snowbound, that snow berm, the road there. Then we have the retention pond on the other side of our fence. So there isn't much we can do in the retention pond. Can't put trees there. What we're hoping to do is just put a seven-foot-tall fence there and try and not park RVs in that area until everything else is full. In the next slide, we have a look across Ralston, from the trail along Croke Canal, looking northeast. You can see some distant off-site buildings. Those are industrial buildings. And then in the next slide, we have with a seven-foot fence and the proposed trees that we're putting up. Now, that's taken from the trail that's along Crow Creek, Croke Canal, right next to the homes on the south side of the project. So unless you have binoculars, that's what you'd be looking at. And that's a seven-foot fence with lots of trees. The next view was taken more to the north of the landfill in Forest Springs, that big mound of dirt that's 40 feet high. That's the landfill. And we went to the top of that landfill right along the trail and took views back, looking at the project. You can see the Quonset huts that are there, that the city uses. And in the next slide, you'll see seven-foot fence with lots of trees. And actually, the natural grasses that grow on the site do a lot of screening. So unless you're, you know, looking at the top of these homes, which we didn't take views from, this is what you're going to see. And you can't really see very many RVs there. The fencing and the trees were put in graphically and to scale so that we didn't have any fudging of the picture. The next thing we're going to talk about is the Comprehensive Plan. And Scott touched on this. One thing I want to bring up again is the emphasis on integrating economic growth and neighborhood vitality with all transportation modes. That's a noble goal, the Comprehensive Plan. And you just can't do it with this type of zoning. I'm going to talk about Policy L 3.2. And that is talking about criteria for new and redeveloped mixed areas, mixed-use areas, as strategically located, high-intensity, pedestrian-friendly oriented activities, providing a range of retail, business, civic, cultural, and residential opportunities. And then below that, they're talking about transit, streets with physical features that allow for public plazas, gathering spaces, amenities, transit service, pedestrian-oriented site design, intercontinent interconnected network of multimodal streets linking the surrounding areas. You just can't do that. None of these apply to 6800 Kilmer. There's just nothing you can do. A mixed-use neighborhood is not realistic due to all these missing elements. There's never going to be transit. There's never going to be a widening of that street without some major redevelopment of the street. And that's not in any of the plans that I've seen. The next slide. Can't see that at all. Arvada has seven items that they consider for major amendment approval criteria. I'm going to read them because they're short. Number one, necessity. The existing Comprehensive Plan and/or any related elements thereof is in need of the proposed amendment. It's definitely in need of the proposed amendment because you have the dichotomy between the Comprehensive Plan and the zoning. So something's got to give. Either it's going to be the zoning or the Comprehensive Plan. We're hoping it's the Comprehensive Plan. The next item is compatibility. The proposed amendment is compatible with the surrounding area and the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Plan. This site is not connected to any of the residential developments to the north, to the west, or to the south. And there are currently no plans or no real reasons for connecting them up. They're independent sites. Forest Springs is developed in that area. You can't really run a road in there unless you got rid of homes. And to the north, we've got Geo Properties. I don't see any of their plans being viable for roadway across Ralston Creek. And crossing Ralston Creek would be a monumental permitting nightmare. So you can't connect up. The only connection to this site is through 68th Avenue. I believe it's 68. Yeah, 68th Avenue. And that's an industrial area that it's connected to. It's a two-lane road, no sidewalks, no curb and gutter, and it's poorly maintained. In fact, we're going to have to improve a large portion of it just to get to our site. That's the transportation element. Negative impacts on transportation services facilities, we have no impact on it. We tried trying to find a -- something in IT standards that would allow us to map out how many trips we'd get from this site. The nearest we could come to it is called Mini Warehouse, and it doesn't really apply because this is not a mini warehouse. You don't have people putting things in these little, small packages. People are going to come there. They'll leave their boat there. They'll leave their RV there, and that's going to be it. They probably won't visit it, you know, every day, every week, maybe not even every month. We don't know. But I'm sure there's studies that will show it. So the trips are infrequent. Doing that mapping, though, through Mini Warehouse, it would be 32 trips in, 32 trips out per day. That is easily within the access of that two-lane road. It's a highly unlikely number in actual trips, but that's what we used. And the peak hour includes six trips. So in the -- the site actually has -- Mini warehouses have three peaks during the day, and none of them actually got up to six. So that's an estimation also. Then we talk about utilities. The proposed amendment will have minimal effect on service provision, including adequacy or availability of urban facilities and services, and is compatible with existing and planned provisions. We already have plans that are into the city of Arvada for water and sewer. And they haven't been approved because this project hasn't been approved. But we've been through two rounds, and we think we've got everything that we need to get it approved. Electrical service is being -- it was approved and will be provided by Xcel Energy. We have all the paperwork ready to go, so we have no impact on utilities. Annexation is not an issue because it's already in the city. And strict adherence. Strict adherence to the existing Comprehensive Plan would result in a situation neither intended nor in keeping with other key elements and policies of the plan. Well, loosely defined, Comprehensive Plan defines a lot of things, but strict adherence to it would mean you really can't do much with this site because the zoning doesn't match. So something has got to give. And the last one is public welfare. The proposed amendment -- the proposed plan amendment will promote the public welfare and will be consistent with the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Plan and the elements thereof. Promoting the public welfare, that can be defined a lot of ways. I'm going to let Scott speak to those items a little later. I'm going to let Scott speak to those items a little later. But that's, those are the seven issues that are going to be addressed. I'm going to start with necessity. There's another slide that you probably cannot read. Let me get to my notes here. Seventeen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, okay. Doesn't show up. Whoops.
I think this is where I was going to take over.
You were?
Yeah.
I can do it. If you want to, jump in there.
I'll jump in.
Okay, why don't you jump in?
All right. Getting to the specific criteria. Number one is necessity. And I think I've already said what the necessity is, that the comprehensive plan designation for this property conflicts with zoning for the property and leaves the property undevelopable. As David said, something has to give. We think it's the comprehensive plan because residential development, and in fact, any development other than industrial development, is impossible at this site. As, as I think you already know, the site is a historic landfill. It was operated by Jefferson County as a municipal landfill from the 1930s into the The landfill was closed in the 1970s before current regulations were in place. So it's not a currently, it's not a, what we call a RICRA subtitle D landfill. But it's outside of regulation. And there could be a lot of problems with that kind of landfill. It was primarily municipal waste that went there, but you never know what somebody may have thrown out in the waste. There's probably asbestos-containing materials in that waste, in that material. And there certainly is a lot of organic matter in there that generates methane and results, as it decays, in shifting, and it makes the ground unsteady. It's not a good surface to build buildings on. And it makes it very difficult for residential development. I'm going to call Brent Anderson up now to talk about landfill issues and redevelopment issues at the site.
My name is Brent Anderson. I'm CEO of ReSite Holdings. Address 1301 Arapahoe Street, Golden, Colorado. Before I speak to the slides, I wanted to talk a little bit about the topic of brownfields, which this is. It's a fallow site, and because of its environmental status, it doesn't have particularly good opportunities to become something else. The whole idea behind brownfields is taking a fallow site and returning it to productive reuse. And that's a circumstance that involves not only a remedy, but development of the site. And so you have all your development issues, along with other ones, that you need to take and get approvals for all of that. And so the end goal in the redevelopment business, and I've been doing this for 30 years now, you know, as not only doing the remedy, but on the investment and development side, on literally hundreds of sites across the United States, it's a process where you've got to get multiple approvals. You've got to get your land use approvals, which is the topic of this discussion, and then you've got to get your other set of approvals, which is typically with the State Health Department, for what it's going to take to make it suitable for that future use. And without those two approvals, you're not going to get financing, you're not going to get future users, and the site will remain fallow. And so I wanted to give you that background a little bit to then talk through some of the possibilities that exist with this site, and in particular, what's the feasibility of a residential development. So we've talked about it a lot already. It's an old landfill. It was used in the 30s to the 70s. It was closed in the way you would close a landfill in the 30s to the 70s, which is certainly not the way you would close it today. And so you have a variety of things in there, at least the data that's been out there, and there's a fair amount, would indicate there's things in landfills, but none of them really trigger anything regulatorily. That's not uncommon. And so the real issue, in my experience in dealing with landfill development, is less the environmental issues associated with it. Quite frankly, more the geotechnical issues. You have, you have materials that don't compact like dirt to a 95 Proctor you can build on, for example. You have things that, because of what was in there, putrescible waste, they degrade at different rates. And so you really have some serious geotechnical issues to put something on it, particularly a building. And we'll talk about that a little bit more as we move ahead. Now, a couple of other things that I think are important, we'll kind of start out with the first one, is CD-PHE won't allow anybody to build on a residential, build residential on a landfill. Hard stop. But even if you were to do so, you're going to end up with extensive foundation design issues, and more importantly, utility stability issues, trying to establish green corridors, things like that, that create risk for the builder as you move ahead. So residential on top of the landfill material, that's not going to happen. Now, we'll see if I can do this right. Hey, there you go. Cool. All right. So we talked about that a little bit, then let's talk about the economic feasibility of it. And we ran through a couple of scenarios for what it would take to redevelop this site in different residential configurations, right? And the first one, which we looked at about a year ago, is what if we were to take and remove the entirety of the landfill mass and truck it off, right? A project that would take over a year with literally thousands of trucks coming in and out of that site to remove that landfill mass, bring it back in. Okay, now you've got a structurally suitable base to build a landfill, but you still haven't solved your access problems and things like that. So we looked at that scenario. We also looked at a scenario where what if we were to take and remove part of the landfill? In other words, clean half of the site and then actually stack the remaining material on the other side. Something I don't think CD-PHE would allow you to do, but if you were to do so, you'd end up with, we figured kind of the optimum break was about seven acres developable, and you'd end up with, by the time you considered buffers and everything else, a four-and-a-half acre, 25-foot-tall mound in the middle of the west side of the site. So a mound the equivalent height of the one west of the Crowe Canal, only much more expansive. So what's the financial implications of that? This chart shows if we took the cost of complete removal and spread it over the number of units you could put on the entirety of the site, what would that be on a per-acre basis and a per-unit basis? And so before you did any site grading, installation of any utilities, anything else, you're looking at 275 or 2.75 million an acre to do that. And a per-unit cost of about $400,000. And so if you look at that compared to other comparable sites in the area, and we updated this from last year, you're roughly 5X the land value before you ever do anything on this site. And by the way, the other thing that's important to note here is you've got to put all this money out because you're not going to get a bank to finance it. You've got to put $38 million out betting on the come that you can go sell, you know, units on this thing for north of $2 million. That's the residential reality of that. The partial removal doesn't get any better. In fact, it's worse because you have less units to spread the cost on. And even though the cost is less, it doesn't go down as much in proportion. So now you're at about 410 a unit, a little over 2.8 million per acre in that scenario. That's been our analysis of what would happen there. The point being that, again, if you look at other land that people would develop in Arvada to be competitive, you're five times the land basis to make that happen, and you don't have the density to come anywhere near supporting that, either in a full removal or a partial removal case. So, see here, oops, I wanted to cover one other thing here. Talk about what can go there. I wanted to touch on this at the bottom of this slide. What have we seen across the countryside? First of all, what you can put on a site like this is something that can take a low-loading kind of circumstance, right? Something that doesn't take a foundation to support it, for example, something you could, it's called float, on the landfill. And so what do you see? Vehicle storage yards, you see inventory storage yards. And if you, actually, if you drive down I-70, and I-76 heading east, you'll see examples of this. They're there right now. Raw material aggregate kind of storage yards and solar arrays. Solar arrays are something that become a little bit problematic because you have to have them so they can, they can adjust if their bases settle. The last thing, I didn't put on a list, but I think it's probably worth mentioning, is, you know, certainly there are circumstances where it gets used as an open space or a park. But those are almost always municipally owned. The municipality has the liability for what it is and what it may become, and the cost of putting it at a condition back at CD-PHE of what is technically safe. So I'll stop there and hope that is helpful. But from my perspective, I see no possibility that this becomes any kind of economically feasible residential development. Thank you.
Compatibility is the next issue. Certainly, industrial use is compatible with the property immediately to the east and to which this property is connected by a roadway. There are residential properties to the southwest and north. They are separated, fortunately, by waterways that are pretty significant in size, which provides a nice buffer between this property and a light industrial use as you move away from the city's heavy industrial use towards the residential properties. As you've seen, the development plan for the RV space includes a significant setback from those waterways, and also now includes additional screening with additional trees. Compatibility also considers the ability to access the property. As we've said, there's only one access in and out. But there's also limited public transportation. The property is about a five-minute drive and a 40-minute walk from the closest bus stop. It's about a 10-minute drive and a 90-minute walk to the closest train station. It simply doesn't have good access to public transportation. As David indicated, we have utilities in the road, so utilities are not a concern, and the property is not being annexed. Which brings us to strict adherence with existing comprehensive plan requirements. And the problem that residential is not allowed here. So the predominant use under the comprehensive plan for a mixed-use residential must be residential. And the two designations between the comprehensive plan and the zoning cannot coexist. Property simply is not developable. That certainly could not be intended. It also couldn't be in the intent to put residential here when it's so difficult to get in and out of the property, and when the property is juxtaposed so heavily against industrial property. It's just not a good place for pedestrians or for families. And on the public welfare issue, it makes a lot of sense to develop this property with a low-impact industrial use, such as an RV storage facility. That means we're not digging up the property and causing materials to move around. It means that there is limited in and out at the property. It means that the items that are on the property, in particular, the vehicles, are movable and can be moved if they need to be because of settling at the property. It means that we don't have enclosed structures with people working in them, except for a small building, which will have vapor mitigation in it to manage methane issues. But if it's not developed, then nobody's watching it. There were a lot of public comments about bank stabilization and concerns about the existence of a landfill here and what's going to happen, and methane from landfills, and the myriad things that could be in a landfill. But leaving this property undeveloped doesn't change any of that. And as we've shown, it can't be developed for residential. So a good use for this property is light industrial, an RV storage facility that will have people on it regularly. Another element of this is a voluntary cleanup plan with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. As Mr. Anderson indicated, the environmental issues fall under CD-PHE's realm. And CD-PHE has a program that allows people to come in voluntarily with impacted sites and ask for state oversight and approval of a plan to deal with those environmental conditions so that that property can be redeveloped. Now, the property doesn't fall under any regulatory program that mandates any kind of management or cleanup of the site. But the voluntary cleanup program provides state review and oversight and confirmation that what you do there is going to be safe for public health and the environment. And Shelton, the applicant, has already submitted a plan to CD-PHE, a voluntary cleanup plan for the development of this site, which has been approved by CD-PHE. And that plan will require management of any material that is excavated, and there will need to be some minor excavation to put in utilities and to put in the small office building that will be there. So when excavation occurs, there has to be an environmental professional on site who's observing the excavation, who segregates the material and identifies whether there are any hazardous materials there that have to be specially handled. The plan also will require methane mitigation for the small office that will be there. And it will prohibit residential use of the property because, as Mr. Anderson said, CD-PHE will not allow residential use on a landfill. The covenant is not yet in place. That's been suspended while we've been working through this process. And the only reason to go forward with a covenant like that is if the development plan is approved and development can be moved forward. I would also like to comment at the, at the previous hearing, there were, there was a question from the city council about development, residential development on landfills in the city of Arvada, with an answer confirming that, yes, there have been. city of Arvada, with an answer confirming that, yes, there have been those kinds of developments. The Forest Springs development is on a former landfill. That mound that you see separating the Forest Springs development from the Crook Canal is compiled trash from the landfill. They scraped up the landfill so that they could develop on clean land, and they piled it up right there, and they put a cover on it. And it's still subject to methane sampling on a regular basis. There are methane vents around the neighborhood. And so that neighborhood is not actually, right now, built on top of landfill, but it's built around a landfill and has methane protection. As Mr. Anderson indicated, that's not possible at our site. The cost of, of moving the material and creating a mound like that is comparable to the cost of taking all the material off-site, which is just economically prohibitive for development. In addition, CD-PHE probably, in this day and time, would not allow residential development around that mound, not without, well, it would not allow residential development around that mound. So, that's just not a practical option at this site. One last item is that the Ralston Creek Trail crosses the property at the northwest corner of the property, and we recognize that's a, a great amenity for the community. The city never obtained a right to place that path across the property, but as part of this development plan, the developer is proposing to grant the city an easement for I want to thank you for your time again, and we will now, that ends our presentation. We'll reserve the right to provide some rebuttal, but we can now move on to the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your detailed presentation this evening. We have several folks signed up for public comment, as well as many who did not wish to speak but wanted their names on the record. So, quickly, I will go ahead and read onto the record the names that I have that do not wish to speak, and if you change your mind, that's completely okay, but just sort of let me know when I call after the other speakers have gone. So, the names who have come that are against the issue but do not wish to speak on it are Ellen Bothner, Jack Wheel, Nicholas Heron, Amy Haas, Jonathan Haas, Joyce Cullen, James Cullen, Eric Mathis, Deborah Gander, Suzanne Grandchamp, Renee Azerbeggi, Bedgie, I apologize for mispronouncing that, Scott Oppenheimer, thank you, Councilmember Davis, Jay Smolin, making a bit of extra room for me, Frances Rosier, William Sweet, Barbara Lutz, Linda Graham, Maria Seisling, Darlene Evans, Jill LeBond Soucy, Paul H. Phillips, Marilyn Phillips, Philippe, Joyce Spiegler, David Spiegler, Edward D. Vins, Vins, Vincenzo, Elaine Fitzgerald, Gerald Spann, Karen Swet, Swick, Kelly Wheel, Julie Johnson, Deborah Burke, and Joe Burke. With that, I will invite up the attorney for the opposition for the public comment, Mr. James Silvestro, who will be afforded 15 minutes in light of being able to cover a bit of a larger group. Welcome, Mr. Silvestro. You know the rules.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please share who you're representing as well.
Good evening, City Council. My name is James Silvestro. I'm a land use attorney with the law firm of Ireland Stapleton. My office address is 1660 Lincoln Street in Denver. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Friends of Ralston Creek Neighborhoods, a nonprofit group that was formed to advocate for the neighborhoods along the Ralston Creek and smart growth within the city of Arvada. It's been a few years since I've been in front of this city council, but some new faces, some new faces and new chairs. I always like to start by thanking you all for your public service. I know these are not easy decisions, and we do appreciate all the effort that you're putting into this. I'd also like to thank staff. They've been as helpful as they're allowed to be, and so we appreciate them fielding all the different last-minute requests. I did submit a letter on Friday. It was after the packet went out, and I apologize for that, but hopefully you got it by email. I do have hard copies.
I can confirm that we did receive it.
Okay. I have hard copies if, if that's helpful to reference.
Yes, please. Go ahead, if you can hand, and then pass them down.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
In case you didn't have a chance to print it, I thought it might just be helpful to have it in front of you. And then lastly, just another housekeeping matter, I do want to thank you for allowing us to pool time. We do appreciate that this jurisdiction allows the opposition to sort of organize themselves and to make a fulsome presentation. With that said, I do want to be efficient with my time as well. On the substantive matters, on the incompatibility of this proposal, on the threat to the general welfare that it represents, you're going to hear from your constituents about that. These are the folks that live there, that will live there, that will have to live with the decision that you make, and so I think we need to elevate sort of their perspective on those issues. What I want to address tonight are some of the issues addressed in my letter, and specifically there are three issues that I want to address. First, there's no takings issue here, and there's no need for this council to do anything under legal duress. Second, the city council respectfully lacks the legal authority to amend the comprehensive plan under state law. And then third, under your own land use rules, this body is not permitted to consider any new information than what was before you last November when you rejected this proposal. So, starting with the first issue, there's no need for the city to do anything under legal duress. Doing nothing cannot possibly give rise to a taking. Unfortunately, from the neighbor's perspective, we're at a bit of an information deficit in terms of what exactly the developer has been pursuing with the city. We don't know all the discussions they've had with staff or with the city attorney. We don't obviously know what happened in various executive sessions about this application. We also don't have any insight into why this hearing was set before the September 2nd city council meeting where you actually decided to revive this application. And then, you know, we've looked at the record of that September 2nd decision, we don't have much insight into why the, the city by a supermajority vote decided to bring this application back for yourselves, rather than requiring a new process or some sort of new application. So, we're sort of at a deficit of information, but I will say when a developer says that city regulations are making a property undevelopable, a land use attorney's ears sort of perk up. City attorneys' ears probably perk up, too. And so I think what we're really dealing with here is whether or not there's some sort of claim that the applicant is going to make if this approval does not go through. And again, we feel like the other half of that story has not been told, and that's really where I wanted to come in, because I think that argument is wrong for several reasons. One, the city has the opportunity here, Chelton has the opportunity to request this, for the city, for the city to change the zoning to match the comp plan and not the other way around. You can make the IL zoning into mixed-use residential to match the comp plan that has been in place since 2005 and perhaps earlier. Now, they've got a response for that. Chelton does not want to remediate the site. They say it's going to be very expensive, and yes, it probably would be very expensive to develop a landfill as a mixed-use residential community. But that's the most important issue, because the context around how this situation came to be is what completely takes the legs out from any sort of takings argument. This applicant purchased the site for $85,000 in 2012. Now, I don't know exactly what land use values were in 2012, but I'm guessing it's not common to buy 14 acres in Arvada in 2012 for $85,000. You might be able to get one acre for that price in 2012, but the reason that they got such a deal is because this is a remediated, an unremediated brownfield site. There's a landfill in place. There are regulatory controls, you heard from the brownfields specialist, that it's not just about getting your land use entitlements, you also have to get your environmental approvals. And at the same time that Chelton bought the property in 2012 for a discounted price, they also knew or should have known that the zoning for the site did not match the comprehensive plan classification. So, this inconsistency, this incongruity between those two land use classifications, that predated their ownership of this property. And that's really important, because when you look at a takings analysis, what you're really looking at is whether or not there's a regulation that's prohibiting the reasonable investment-backed expectations of the landowner. And they might have investment-backed expectations for this site. They talked about a pro forma and how you make a pencil with how many parking spaces, but those are not reasonable given the situation that they bought into. The city has not done anything since 2012 to make this site undevelopable. It's a situation that predated their decision to buy into this problem. And so when they talk about it being impractical or prohibitively expensive, or, the city's comprehensive plan since 2012 has said this needs, or since 2005, excuse me, seven years before they bought the site, said this site is being set aside for mixed-use residential. It's adjacent to the Ralston Creek. It's bordered on three sides by existing dense residential neighborhoods. That's the situation that they bought into. And so if the city does nothing, if the city preserves that status quo, that doesn't give rise to some new takings argument. You haven't regulated away a right that they ever had. They never had the right to do what they're trying to do at this site. They're asking you for permission, and if you say no, that's entirely within your authority to do. They bought this problem, and the city has not done anything to take any vested development right that they have. And what value have they really lost? $85,000 for a 14-acre site that everyone knew was dirty and undevelopable when they did it in 2012. That's not a reasonable investment, and so there's no reasonable investment-backed expectation. Turning to the second argument, and again, I say this with the utmost respect, I heard the prefatory language from the, the city attorney, and, and they're absolutely right. Your comprehensive plan and your LDC both say that it's the city council that ultimately makes decisions about how you amend the comprehensive plan, but that's not my argument. My argument is that state law supersedes any inconsistencies within your local rules. And specifically, it's CRS 3123101 that provides for the creation of a planning commission, which you all have done, and empowers that body to adopt a comprehensive plan, which your planning commission has done and has updated over the years and is going to be updating in the next two years. But the critical part is that CRS 3123206 provides that only that planning commission can update or amend your master plan. And so, you know, I, I don't know the whole history of how the administrative procedures got set up within your land development code. It's possible that it predated the current version of the Municipal Planning Act, which supersedes local zoning control, but the reality is that process does not comply with state law. State law says that only the planning commission gets to make decisions about the comprehensive plan. Here, the planning commission has spoken. They voted by a margin of six to one to deny this requested comprehensive plan amendment. And the fact that it's now on appeal before you all, again, I would respectfully say is not proper. And so there's a risk there, because I do believe that that violates state law. And I think that the city council would exceed its authority if it were to proceed now and overrule that planning commission decision. Turning to the third legal issue, even if the city council, even if I'm wrong, even if the city council can consider changes to the comprehensive plan, there's still a procedural problem here, because your own land development code says that in these sorts of appeals, this is classified as an administrative appeal from the planning commission's decision, you're not allowed to consider any new evidence. And if you're not allowed to consider new evidence, then why would you change the decision that you made a year ago? We've heard from the developer that they've added landscaping and the berm got a little higher. That's all new evidence, and they're asking you to change your decision based on that new evidence. But again, I'd submit to you that Section 8255 of the Land Development Code actually prohibits that. And so again, I think it would be an abusive discretion if you were to move forward with this reconsideration at this point. What should happen, what can happen, is that they could file a new application. Your code says that if you get denied on a land use application, there's a 12-month cooling off period before you can bring back a substantially similar land use application. I'm sure you're familiar with that, that requirement. We're like two weeks away from their year anniversary of getting denied, and if they want to come back with a new proposal with new evidence, then they're totally going to be allowed to do that in November, but that requires a new neighborhood meeting. It requires new staff analysis. It requires a new referral process from all the surrounding impacted agencies and special districts, and ultimately it requires a new planning commission hearing, where the planning commission can make the decision if it wants to change the decision from last year. So again, I want to thank you for your careful time and consideration. I think there was a question for clarification about whether or not this was a consideration of the site plan tonight. We agree it's not. This is about the comprehensive plan amendment, but our understanding is that staff has classified the site plan approval as an administrative matter. So, this really is the last word that you all will have on this application at this site. This owner purchased a contaminated site that the comprehensive plan had already set aside for mixed-use residential development. The fact that they don't want to go through with the requirements that were in place at the site when they purchased the property is not a problem that this council needs to solve. There is nothing that you need to do under legal duress. If the city does nothing to change the status quo, that is not a taking, and there's nothing that compels you to do that tonight. There's nothing that compels you to change the decision that you already made a year ago to deny this request, and we'd ask you to do that again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak, we have Gina Halasy. Ms. Halasy has requested some visual aids, and so we'll give her a moment to get those set up before her time begins. No, they listed the, the four names that Mr. Silvestro took his time, so, no, I, I have that cleared, but thank you, Councilmember Fife, for you're absolutely right on that procedural item.
Can you see it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith, for being an assistant in this condition.
We've already been here long enough. Okay.
Just to point out, you can just lay it on the table, and we can see it up here.
Well, this is different than that, a little bit. They're different.
You can change them out when you need to.
Okay. My name, good evening. My name is Gina Halasy. I'm a board member for the Ralston Valley Coalition and HOA Vice President for Maple Valley. I live just east of the Kilmer Site, adjacent to Maple Valley Park and the Ralston Creek Trail. I did send you my comments in advance, so hopefully you read them. I'll be commenting on compatibility, and we'll start by directing you to the future land use map showing the site in relation to adjacent uses. The red outline is the heavier uses, and everything else is lighter or transitional uses. The site is outlined in black. I agree with Council's 6-1 decision last November. I agree with Council's 6-1 decision last November to deny the comp plan change for the Kilmer Site based on criteria number two, which requires that the proposed amendment be compatible with the surrounding area and the goals and policies of the comp plan. The enlarged map that's shown up there for the public shows the Kilmer Site and nearby areas, highlighting that most land use is in some form of residential, not industrial. As mentioned, you can see the outlines of the heavier uses in red and that most other uses are lighter. Given its surroundings, the Kilmer Site is designated properly as mixed-use residential and is strategically located to achieve compatibility. Quoting from the city's comp plan goals and policies, Goal CC1, plan Arvada as a city of different development character districts. Policy CC13, compatible infill. The city will encourage new infill development to consider and be sensitive to the character of existing neighborhoods. Considerations shall include building scale, placement size, height, transitions, landscape, streetscape, and other design measures. Policy CC14, work with stakeholders. The city will work with stakeholders, developers, and the community to consider a project's potential effects and strive for integration in a manner that helps enrich the district's character. I'd also like to share a definition of compatibility from the Planner's Dictionary. The characteristics of different uses or activities or design which allow them to be located near or adjacent to each other in harmony. Compatibility does not mean the same as. Rather, compatibility refers to the sensitivity of development proposals in maintaining the character of existing development. Industrial areas can coexist with residential or open space through transitional zones like mixed-use residential. The former Amazon Site at 68th and Indiana, in process to be rezoned to some form of mixed-use residential, demonstrates successful collaboration among the city developer and community to find harmony for a site bordered by multiple uses. The Kilmer Site could have similar success if all contamination is addressed before development and the developer understands that publicly-owned open space can never be used as a buffer for their purposes. And other people will talk about public welfare and Criteria VII. The comp plan update starting in '26 offers an opportunity to review West Arvada's...
Ms. Halasy?
I'm on my last sentence. Let me finish my sentence.
Last sentence. Go ahead.
To review West Arvada's land use in detail and will include public input. This is the correct process to do any amendments, so I urge you to deny this applicant's amendment change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you expand that at all?
Yeah. We'll zoom in a little bit. It was a dramatic zoom. I agree. So really nice, almost like film quality to it. Mr. Rollick, whenever you're ready.
My name is Mike Rollick. I'm with the Ralston Valley Coalition. The vote tonight is on a comp plan change to light industrial, not an RV storage park. New information about a berm that's two foot higher and some more saplings to cover some RVs is both inconsequential in scope and immaterial as it considers a specific site use. The vote must consider all potential light industrial uses. Applicants' projected costs of a true cleanup should not matter. The applicant speculated on land at a very low cost per acre. There was a Phase II ASA done by Ogden in October 1991 that we found through EPA FOIA did the applicant do the similar research and due diligence. The applicant, September 25 project narrative says, moreover, the property presents very unique circumstances making any development other than light industry impractical. Light industry, not an RV park. And by the way, last year, Councilmember Davis, you had talked about your knowledge of residential developments on former landfills and experience in the liners that you put on there through your consulting firm. So we won't look at some of the other uses that can be used here. Office of general contractors, specialty subcontractors, tradesmen, telecommunications providers, including a parking of commercial vehicles or a fleet of cars, vans, or light trucks that are used in business. Sounds very similar to an RV storage park. All you gotta do is put one small office and have Xfinity have their vehicles there instead. So that might hurt policy number three. This proposed amendment will have no major impacts on transportation. 355 vehicles in and out for a shift, plus 355 workers coming in and out, so about 1,400 trips per day. If we look at industrial use number two, that's what we can come up with, is food production, beverage production, furniture making, manufacturing textiles, are these compatible with the area? Screen printing, printing and publishing, research, development, and testing laboratories? Might I ask about psilocybin? That's a brand-new use. We were talking in August about possible setbacks from residential for psilocybin facilities. You vote tonight, they put up more Quonset huts or greenhouses. I looked up greenhouses at 12,000 pounds for 50 by 60. That's much less weight than these RVs themselves, much less worry about this gravel, and now all of a sudden you've got a psilocybin facility in a very close proximity to home. So make sure that could be compatible as well. And land for employment uses is a policy ED 2.1. This will have a few jobs, two, three. You're not even building a real building here. You could probably do an automated kiosk to make sure your RVs are checked in. So really want to take a look at that. And also, as far as the V cup right now and what's going on there, we've been in contact with Fonda, and right now they have not requested an extension. As Fonda has said today, is my understanding from the speaking to the consultant, they are weighing out their options. If they don't start work by November 2025, they will have to reapply to the V cup from Fonda. And I asked as well, I did a core request, and I found out that there has been no additional documents responsive to this request. And I asked for revisions to the V cup for the property, timeline extensions, modifications, and then any no action determination letter. So when it comes to Criteria VII...
Mr. Rollick, your time is expired.
Yes, Criteria VII.
Two seconds to wrap.
In good faith, we're surprised they're not working with CDPH anymore.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rollick. All right. With that, Rich Bowling.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Rich Bowling. I live at 14991 West 70th Avenue in West Woods Mesa. The applicant pretty much made the case for the site that it's going to be pretty hard to develop anything on the site, residential or industrial. It has too many impairments. Simply changing the comp plan to match doesn't magically make the problems disappear from the site. The applicant makes a case against residential, but never really explains how industrial development avoids the pitfalls of residential development. Most light industrial uses, like Mike just said, require buildings that are very similar to residential applications and would basically have to have pretty similar exposure limitations for some of the VOCs and things that are bad on the site. The applicant's presentation only listed a couple of impairments. There, in addition to those, they list environmental hazards, geotechnical problems. There's also site drainage. There's limited land uses, which usable area, which they just admitted, and is one of the reasons they're probably seeking the minor modifications to reduce buffering and expand from 35% storage to 42% storage. The applicant states that all landfills have a wide variety of uses, but only mentions methane, or has a wide variety of contaminants, but only mentions methane and asbestos. Their one slide does show that the site, if they moved ways, would have 20% asbestos in it or be contaminated with it. Of course, the best option for any of the industrial or residential would be complete removal of the materials. The 38.7 million would require, be applied to most any of the uses. But they don't show a differential for what their proposed project would be. A simple grade in gravel doesn't avoid the methane problems or contaminant exposures. The applicant's geotechnical problems are best summed up or recommendations by one of their consultants. The site has been subject to numerous geotechnical investigations. Based on the geotechnical engineering analysis, subsurface exploration, laboratory results, the existing landfill material should not be used for foundations, slabs, pavements within areas of new construction. Complete removal of land materials and replacement with fill engineering. Partial removal could be considered where potentially movement can be tolerated. What they're proposing is a grade in gravel and will be subject to severe settlement and issues with the site, so I oppose it and stand by.
Come on, guys. Thank you. I appreciate it. Please don't make me be the bad guy on time, you guys. I appreciate it. All right.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Day Wado. I live at 4816 West 61st Place. I'm an environmental engineer with a bachelor's and master's degrees from Colorado School of Mines and nearly a decade of experience in site reclamation. I'm speaking to you today as an engineer because I'm genuinely conflicted about this project. This could be exactly what we need, a private developer willing to invest in remediating an unregulated landfill that's been sitting adjacent to Ralston Creek for decades. Done right, this is the kind of project we could celebrate, but I have to ask, is this being done right? I've prepared some questions I hope will be helpful in your own investigations into this proposal. You already rejected this project once for being incompatible with the community, so my first question is simple. What's changed? What substantive engineering improvements address public safety, compatibility, and creek contamination concerns? I notice a project that isn't centered around remediation, but rather one that shifts the long-term liability from an out-of-state developer to our community. The city's floodplain manager concluded in January that bank stabilization efforts would be unsuccessful due to the constrained nature of the creek. After a flood in 2013, waste breached into Ralston Creek. Arsenic exceeds EPA limits in the landfill. The bank continues to erode. What protects our creek during the next flood? City staff has started stabilization, stated stabilization is necessary to protect this facility, so the work must be done at development and cannot become the city's responsibility. Has the developer or their engineers provided a stream stabilization plan or characterization of Ralston Creek? The design uses a gravel surface instead of a modern engineered cap, which means it accelerates waste decomposition rather than containing it. Arsenic, benzene, toluene, and other VOCs are already detected on-site. How will these constituents be prevented from discharging to surface water, groundwater, or gases being collected in stored RVs? Has an air quality permit been submitted to CDPH? The proposal acknowledges settlement will compress the waste and expel hazardous pour gases. Yet there's no active gas collection system, no monitoring. When those releases happen, who responds? Arvada does. I want to see the site properly remediated. A well-designed project would include consistent characterization, proper caps, thorough gas mitigation, stabilization plans, long-term monitoring, and financial assurances. That project would deserve your support, but that is not what's in front of you. What we have is a proposal where experts say the creek cannot be stabilized. Investigations conflict on waste characterization, and carcinogens will continue to be released. When problems emerge, and they will, who pays? This is not about what you can see. It's about what you can't. Let's demand a project that remediates the site instead of one that transfers its problems to you. Thank you.
Thank you. And right on time. Thank you, Ms. Day Wado. All right. It's nice to have something to look at. Mr. Gerbach, could you turn those around? They're upside down on our screen. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Reiner Gerbach. I live in Geos. Your duty as a council is first and foremost to public safety, environmental integrity, and fiscal responsibility. This duty was upheld when this council, based on planning commission recommendations, rejected a proposed RV storage yard. TERRCOWN's multiple geotech reports tell us pretty much everything we need to know. A parade of warnings, incessant settlement, gas generation, contaminant migration, and inherent unpredictable instability. The presence of arsenic above EPA residential and regional screening levels and asbestos, price light at 6%. They're not just hypothetical risks, they are measured contaminants. The parcel borders, the floodplain zone AE along Ralston Creek and the Crowe Canal. The 2024 TERRCOWN report is unambiguous. Lack of continuous site drainage creates an unavoidable risk of deep, long-term, and unpredictable movement of the landfill debris supporting drive lanes and parking areas. The site can only be maintained via a stringent yet undefined maintenance and replacement protocol consisting of multiple rig ratings per year, every year. Impaired site drainage carries the unavoidable risk of collapse. The period leading to collapse, we will see increased methane releases, uncontrolled contaminant migration. Operational, the risks multiply. There's no sanitary sewer or septic, no dump station, no engineered containment for fuel, oil, battery acid, or chemical leaks. Even small spills or a bit illegal dumping, which will reach groundwater and adjacent waterways, given the minimal landfill cap. TERRCOWN, despite its near 20-year involvement in this project, forcefully disclaims environmental responsibility. Question is why? Well, TERRCOWN reached the same conclusion as Ogden in 1991. The landfill should not be used for commercial or residential development. Now, with this council's express invitation, the very same project has been resubmitted, materially unaltered. The only detectable change, pressure from a developer without legal accountability, desperate for a low-budget approach, and unconcerned with environmental consequences, and the council's newfound willingness to hopefully not subvert the comp plan. What's most troubling, for months discussions occurred between the developer, the consultants, and city staff, yet residents were left out until very recently. Approach to government that violates transparency and fairness. The consequences? A council that potentially will not just shift risk, but reverse its prior judgment without new facts. Support for this project exchanges integrity for expedience and leaves the public to bear the cost. Your earlier, near-unanimous decision reflected a commitment to sustainable development and your fundamental obligation to responsible fair governance. What has changed that subverts obligation to simple talking points?
We're at time, so I'll give you just one second to wrap up your thought.
Okay. A supermajority denied this development. It must remain denied unless resubmitted as a new project with significant and fundamental changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Brian Glover, and I appreciate you entertaining my comments tonight. I've lived in Arvada most of my life. I've seen a lot of changes over the years, some good and some not-so-good. This proposed change is one of the not-so-good ones, and I'm very concerned. I'm writing this narrative to confirm my support for city council to reject altering Arvada's comprehensive plan from mixed-use residential to industrial office to align with the current zoning of industrial light. Frankly, I'm frustrated a bit that council is willing to once again hear from this developer to potentially open the door for change of the plan. It seemed clear to some residents that this issue was decided when council rejected their bid to change the plan last fall. Arvada's comprehensive plan was created and designed to enable a vision for living and development within Arvada. Yes, review is on the horizon, but what has worked in this area for a long time should be considered as people, communities, businesses, and wildlife have certainly adapted to it. Protection of the creek area and ecosystem is paramount, and that fact cannot be overlooked or understated. Unfortunately, now, we have a player involved who wants to upend and disrupt our environment so they can capitalize on a business opportunity that does not belong or fit within the area. Is this appropriate? Is it environmentally sound? Does it make sense? Is it within the scope of the vision of harmonious living within the plan? No is the answer to all of these questions. This developer has already made a case to make plan changes so that they may insert their business right in the middle of a pleasant and thriving community environment. They have already been advised that their business vision is not a proper fit for the area and that the comprehensive...
My name's Shayna Bootey. I'm a Cornell University Americans with Disabilities Act instructor. I built my home, a disability home in GIOs, for medically fragile people in 2015 due to the clean environment, meaning water, air, and soil. My home has many types of shielding, and I study this in teams of doctors since 2017 and continue to, and I use my 10-year construction engineering background to implement this. I teach GIOs with the building model to the United Nations since I work under ECOSOC with the Sustainable Development Goals, which implement public welfare. GIOs is a North American leader in net zero and is used as a UN model and is most in line with Scandinavian standards. Arvada is on the sustainability map with the United Nations. The RV storage would threaten the disabled and medically fragile people in local neighborhoods. Think in terms of ADA rights and laws which are upheld by the city. Not doing this is harm of public welfare. Shielding proposed is not sufficient to hold many thousands of pounds of RV weight. Because of weight and shielding being insufficient, ecosystems of Ralston Creek would be threatened, not just people. Be mindful of the methane pit under insufficient shielding or being tampered with for retention pond. Use the Bermuda Triangle as a guideline of consequence. Of course, that's a large-scale methane, but small-scale is releasing toxic gas into air, water, and soil and is dangerous. The RV storage creates harm. One, we do need to find out how massive toxic methane and trash is. Do we really need to find this out? Because what we're proposing is an experiment to do this. Two, ADA rights and laws are compromised. Three, loss of environment for environmentally protected raptors who live along the creek. It also impacts wolves, bears, bobcats in ecosystems like beavers, turtles, which are also environmentally protected, plants, and much more on Juniper Court. My address is on Juniper Court. Digging a retention pond could release deadly toxins to the environment and local neighborhoods. Arvada would lose their UN representation as a sustainability leader. And six, light industrial is not compatible. I ask you to not allow developers to harm disabled medically fragile people like myself. The intellectually developmentally disabled population deserves better, and you can protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sally M. Smith.
Thank you very much. For those watching at home, she's declined to speak because her points have already been made. I appreciate that. And for others, ditto is a valid sort of public comment that we do accept here. Anne Gadsberg.
Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to see you, and thank you so much for letting me speak this evening. Oh, I am little. I live in the GIOs, and at the previous November 4th, 2024 city council hearing to amend the comp plan to match the land development code, Bob Pfeifer read the motion to vote on the amendment. After stating clearly that it does not meet the compatibility criteria required by the comprehensive plan, he voted yes in support of denial to not change the comprehensive plan. We agree with his very thoughtful comments and would like to play them for you.
To me, it's about keeping it, you know, either the way it is or how the zone is, and regardless of who's applying for what, because we can sit here all day long and spitball what's going to go in there. You know, right now they have a proposal for an RV storage, but I got to look at it in the lens of, is it light industrial or is it mixed-use residential? And the heavy lift, being gone through a couple of comprehensive plan updates and changes, the heavy lift that the community puts forth and the planning commission has over the decades, had a vision, and that document is that vision. And I believe that there's intentional zoning or a comprehensive view of this area that was intended. So I'm going to, you know, support, obviously, my motion, but the point is, is we, I could sit here and think about any type of mixed use out there, but just like in RV storage, we get a glimpse of what they want to do, but the comprehensive plan today says this, and we can sit here and guess what that is, and we don't know what that's going to look like. You may not be happy what you get out of that, too, if it stays. I mean, it could be, you know, bigger properties out there, but at the end of the day, I got to look at the zoning, or not the zoning, the comprehensive plan, and I agree with that. I don't, and I want to clarify, too, I don't think that it meets criteria two, and maybe even a little seven, but definitely two in the fact that it's not compatible. I get the intentions of the egress-ingress, but there is two-thirds of this triangle that is budded up against residential communities, and there's been changes. We've made changes many times to make sure it's compatible because we, when zoning changes, and maybe when GIOs went in, that changed, that might have been industrial one time, and then it switched to residential. When we start shaping the community, we can't force it in when the community evolved over time. And so right now, I believe it needs to stay with comprehensive plan, and I'm not persuaded by any justification to adjust the comprehensive plan to match its zoning now, so that's where I am.
Councilmember Pfeifer. Well-timed, Councilmember Pfeifer. Next, we have Vincent Parker.
Good evening. My name is Vincent Parker. I reside in the GIOs Homes Neighborhoods. And Randy Mormon, Sharon Davis, Shawna Ambrose, and Lisa Faray voted next, stating their reasons for voting along with Bob Pfeifer. Once again, we believe their comments were well thought out, and we would like to play their comments.
I will be voting to deny it, supporting the motion by Councilmember Pfeifer, and I appreciate all of the testimony tonight and the time that the community has given, as well as the applicant. And I think what it came down to for me was criteria two with compatibility with the area. While yes to the east is industrial, but to the, as pointed out by numerous members of the community today, that to the north, to the west, and to the south is residential or at least not industrial of any type. And so for me, that was a very important factor in why I think it does not meet criteria two, and so that is the reason why I'll be voting yes in support of denial.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. I, too, appreciate all of the public comment and the presentation by the applicant. It's very detailed, and it's supported positions. I will be voting yes on the denial because I do believe that I want to give the planning commission their proper respect. They've done a lot of work on this, and I respect the decision that they made, so I don't want to go against their professional opinion, so that's why I'll be voting yes on this.
Toby. Voting to deny the amendment based on criteria two for compatibility because I do think that the comprehensive plan has it right, that it's mixed-use residential, and that it doesn't work, especially with the shape of the property being so close to the residences, like in this V shape right next to houses. And I also agree that it doesn't meet the criteria for public welfare, number seven, because of the intense recreational use of the area.
Councilmember Faray.
Yes, just if I could say ditto to some of those for compatibility and public welfare.
Toby, voting.
Thank you. And for those of you wondering why we were laughing up here, we realized Councilmember Mormon is wearing the exact same outfit he was that night. Absolutely amazing. Oh, goodness. Okay, and as you can see, ditto is a valid response. Okay. With that, I'm sure it's my turn. I will call up Anna Goble.
Hi, I'm Anna Goble. I also live in the GIOs community. Lastly, Mayor Simpson gave her comments to support the motion last year and voted yes, also in support of denial to not change the comprehensive plan. Please listen to her comments, which we agree with.
Thank you. So I have a few thoughts myself on this issue. I will be voting to support Mr. Pfeifer's motion to deny, and the reason why is, under criteria two, it states very clearly, the proposed amendment is compatible with the surrounding area and the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. I can see it being compatible with the properties to the east, but not necessarily those to the north, south, and west, and that feeds very directly into criteria seven with the public welfare. But I will note to the applicant, you know, I appreciate you coming here, I appreciate the work you've done into this. The expert you have brought for the brownfield discussion was quite compelling. I will say, for me at least, perhaps a little too compelling for your cause. As we traditionally conceive of mixed-use residential, we tend to think of perhaps an apartment building, some mixed use on the lower side with below with commercial development, et cetera, maybe some retail. And I tend to agree with the nature of this site. Such a development likely is not going to be possible. I say likely because I never want to, I never want to put myself into a corner because often that's how you get proven wrong. And so with that, though, I tend to agree with you that that is an unlikely use of this land or a large commercial application such as a big-box store. However, Mr. Marriott is also correct that we are not considering your site plan this evening. We are considering very specifically the industrial zoning that you are asking us to apply. And a light industrial zoning, yes, it could potentially be RV storage, or it could also potentially be a large warehouse, larger than the Walmart. And so looking at that, you know, we zone these things into perpetuity, and, you know, as well as our comp plan, these go into perpetuity. And so as I look at that, perhaps it's this time, but it could be that in the future, and I just don't know if I'm convinced if mixed-use residential, if that is not appropriate, that LI would be appropriate either. And, thank you. So I have a few thoughts myself on this.
The vote of the planning commission on September 17th, 2024, was upheld six to one last year. We see no reason to change that today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rick Sims.
Thank you. My name is Rick Sims. I live in the Forest Springs area, and I would like to read a letter that was sent to the city council by the former mayor, Mark Williams. Let me begin by thanking you for your continued service to our community. Based on my experience, land and use decisions are amongst the toughest and most important that you face. I have made a concerted effort to stay on the sidelines after leaving office, and as such, I will not be attending the city council meeting tonight. However, because this project is of much concern to my neighbors and the surrounding communities, I have been asked to weigh in. The Forest Springs neighborhood has been home to Luanne and me for the past 10 years. It is a closely knit group of folks who are very supportive of our city and police department, as exhibited by the strong turnout each year for National Night Out. I anticipate that you will see many of my neighbors at the public hearing who will be testifying, as they did last year, the opposition to this proposal. We can all be very proud of the Ralston Creek Trail. The recent work you have completed with Mile High Flood Control District continues to show your commitment to this valuable asset. Having the successful Colorado Tap House adjacent to the trail demonstrates how important the trail is to both residents and visitors. Permitting a non-use-by-right RV storage facility adjacent to this crown jewel would diminish the shine of this crown jewel. While I recognize that the out-of-state developer has proposed some screening, this project will undeniably be unsightly to adjacent homeowners, both in Forest Springs and the GIOs neighborhood, not to mention all the trail users. To show how committed we are to the beauty of this area, Luanne and I recently adopted the trail adjacent to this property through the highly successful Adopt a Trail program. My neighbors have appropriately raised safety concerns of the pre-existing conditions of this property as a former dump adjacent to Ralston Creek and Crook Canal, in addition to the fire potential from propane tanks, gasoline, and vehicles stored on the proposed facilities. Less than a year ago, both the planning commission and the city council rejected on a six-to-one vote this project, in part for reasons consistent with this letter. I was frankly disappointed that the matter is now before you again. The integrity of the council decisions requires consistency. I would urgently request that you reaffirm your analysis and rationale for your prior decision and reject this new application, respectively submitted Mark Williams. I'd just like to add that I could have replayed the 11-4 comments, and they'd be exactly what they are from the developer today. I really think that we should be looking at the comp plan and what it can be in the future. We can do better than 350 RVs. I'm almost done. Please adhere to the existing comp plan, protect the Ralston Creek and the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. The last person I have signed up is David Soucy.
All right. Good evening, mayor and members of the council. My name is David Soucy. I live in the Forest Springs community, directly adjacent to the amended area. I oppose the proposal to amend the approved master comp plan at 6800 Kilmer. I am a licensed property adjuster with over 30 years of experience and also retired FAA safety inspector, and also now I am the senior safety analyst for CNN. My entire career has been centered around assessing risk and its real-world impact on people, property, and the environment. Neither the out-of-state developer nor the city has conducted a community fiscal impact study to determine what the cost would be to go from mixed-use residential to light industrial. year for National Night Out. I anticipate that you will see many of my neighbors at the public hearing who will be testifying, as they did last year, the opposition to this proposal. We can all be very proud of the Ralston Creek Trail. The recent work you have completed with Mile High Flood Control District continues to show your commitment to this valuable asset. Having the successful Colorado Tap House adjacent to the trail demonstrates how important the trail is to both residents and visitors. Permitting a non-use-by-right RV storage facility adjacent to this crown jewel would diminish the shine of this crown jewel. While I recognize that the out-of-state developer has proposed some screening, this project will undeniably be unsightly to adjacent homeowners, both in Forest Springs and the GEOs neighborhood, not to mention all the trail users. To show how committed we are to the beauty of this area, Luanne and I recently adopted the trail adjacent to this property through the highly successful Adopt a Trail program. My neighbors have appropriately raised safety concerns of the pre-existing conditions of this property as a former dump adjacent to Ralston Creek and Crook Canal, in addition to the fire potential from propane tanks, gasoline, and vehicles stored on the proposed facilities. Less than a year ago, both the Planning Commission and the city council rejected on a six to one vote this project, in part for reasons consistent with this letter. I was frankly disappointed that the matter is now before you again. The integrity of the council decisions requires consistently consistency. I would urgently request that you reaffirm your analysis and rationale for your prior decision and reject this new application, respectively submitted Mark Williams. I'd just like to add that I could have replayed the 11-4 comments, and they'd be exactly what they are from the developer today. I really think that we should be looking at the comp plan and what it can be in the future. We can do better than 350 RVs. I'm almost done. Please adhere to the existing comp plan, protect the Ralston Creek and the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. The last person I have signed up is David Susi.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is David Susi. I live in the Forest Springs community, directly adjacent to the amended area. I oppose the proposal to amend the approved master comp plan at 6800 Kilmer. I am a licensed property adjuster with over 30 years of experience and also retired FAA safety inspector. And also now I am the senior safety analyst for CNN. My entire career has been centered around assessing risk and its real world impact on people, property, and the environment. Neither the out-of-state developer nor the city has conducted a community fiscal impact study to determine what the cost would be to go from mixed use residential to light industrial. Without that analysis, we don't know how much owner's insurance premiums will rise, or how far property values will fall. From my experience in 30 years as an insurance adjuster and underwriting, those impacts will be significant, negative, and measurable for every one of the thousands of nearby homeowners. The city's comprehensive plan lists seven criteria, number seven about promote the public welfare and remain consistent with the plans, goals, and policies. This policy fails, or this proposal fails that test. It prioritizes only the short-term welfare of the out-of-state developer and profits over the long-term welfare and promotion of our community. As a safety professional, I urge the council to apply true risk-based thinking, not just the likelihood of catastrophe, but the magnitude of harm if one does occur. In this business of risk management, we only know what we did wrong. We never or rarely know what we did right. So when something goes wrong, we will all know it, and it could be permanent, whatever happens with this. The developer knowingly purchased this contaminated property as a tax sale, as we know in the 90s. And the out-of-state developer has already accepted responsibility for known contaminants risks when they purchased the property's sale. The city will become complicit in the contamination risks and responsible for the additional cost to residents and cleanup for of a catastrophe event if it does occur. Amending the approved comprehensive plan to light industrial, under the light industrial zoning, the developer does not require the same level of risk mitigation, monitoring, or regulatory oversight as a mixed residential use would, nor would it be monitored as closely if it was in a mixed residential use. There have been no meaningful changes since the proposal was rejected to six to one in 2024. Approving it now would undermine the public trust in the stability of the comprehensive plan. I bought my house based on the fact that I knew what was going to go forward with that comprehensive plan. That's the purpose of the comprehensive plan. I've also been a developer in other cities. I've developed commercial plans. Oh, I'm sorry, my time expired. Boy, that went quick.
It does go really quick. I agree.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Oh, thank you. All right. That's all the signups I have for this evening. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give public comment on this hearing at this time? Please come forward. Name an address for the record. And before you leave, I would ask that you fill out a sheet for Ms. Rush.
I'm James Cullen. My name is in that list of non-testifying. The issue of compatibility is a very obvious one. Everyone has talked about it. I can't help but ask the council the question, is it more compatible because they built a higher berm, or because they planted more trees, because they propose a higher fence? I think all those are adjustments that show it's not compatible. And I'd just like to ask you to please consider that. I don't believe it's compatible at all with the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of this evening's agenda. And I believe we open it to the applicant for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments. Mr. Silvestro began his presentation talking about takings. And of course, you're not determining tonight whether there is a takings, and nobody is presenting that issue, but it is looming out there large. The decision of the city council could potentially result in a taking. There is a property that can't be developed right now because of conflicting regulation that robs it of all value. I do want, and the city council has its own attorneys that has and certainly will advise it on those issues. But I want to state on the record that the U.S. Supreme Court has determined that these concerns about a transfer after a regulatory action don't matter. If there was a taking, it's a taking. And even if a new buyer takes ownership after the regulation goes into effect, with knowledge of it, it's still a taking of private property by the government. There's also an issue of ripeness of a claim. Claim doesn't become ripe until the property owner has exercised its rights to seek redress from the local government. That's what we're doing right now. As to legal authority, we agree with the city attorney's office. We agreed with them when this process was started years ago, and I won't comment on that any further. As to new information, the provisions of the code that were cited by Mr. Silvestro deal with appeals to this body, not reconsideration. This body has the authority to make the initial decision, and therefore, it inherently, according to the Colorado Supreme Court, has the authority to reconsider that decision. I want to touch on the V cup issue. There was a comment that it's about to, the approval is about to run out. The V cup program has a timeline to complete work once the once the plan is approved. Cheltenham LLC has sought an extension of that timeline and been granted an extension to October, to November of 2026, and can seek more extensions. And even if an extension isn't granted, it can always go back to V cup and ask for new approval of a new voluntary cleanup plan, which it would do for this site. It doesn't make sense to do any work here on the ground or do any redevelopment without getting a V cup approval from CD PAG. And that's another important issue. There were a lot of comments that get into details about environmental concerns at the site, about technical details of development, such as the stream bank. There are plans for stabilization of the stream bank. The Mile High Flood District is a commenting entity and has provided comments and are being, those will be, have been, and will continue to be addressed in the site development plan and the engineering. The environmental issues are presented, have been, and will continue to be presented to CD PAG for confirmation that we can move forward with this project and protect public health and the environment. So again, the question here tonight is whether to amend the comprehensive plan so that the designation for this property is consistent with the zoning and consistent with the industrial properties that it is associated with by transportation, by boundaries to the east of the property. Thank you. We again appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight, and we look forward to your determination.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So I put this one to the council and the team. We are at the two-hour mark right now into this hearing. I usually call breaks about every two hours. Do you want a three-minute leg stretch and potty break before we go into council questions, or do you want to power through? All right. I hear votes for powering through, so I open it to council for comments or questions Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Well, I might come back. I just have some off the top. Could, I don't know if I have anything else, Rachel, that you might want to weigh in on, just to kind of give us some more context, because there's a lot of legal jargon. There's a lot of lawyers in this room. Maybe you can help dumb it down for myself, maybe at least.
Absolutely.
Of where we are, what's being said here. There's a lot of ping pong going on.
Yeah, absolutely. I am going to refer this over to Ms. Sargent. She has responses to all of the legal arguments that have been made.
Okay, I'm going to try and address them point by point. If I miss anything, let me know. We've heard prior statements again, that city council lacks the authority to amend the comprehensive plan because it's contrary to state law. Mr. Silvestro is relying on revised statute 31 dash 23 dash 206 subsection two. I'm going to read you the text, and explain why it doesn't apply. Section two, as the work of making the whole master plan progresses, the commission may from time to time adopt and publish a part thereof. Any such part shall cover one or more major sections or divisions of the municipality, or one or more of the foregoing or other functional matters to be included in the plan. The commission may amend, extend, or add to the plan from time to time. While that gives the planning commission the authority to adopt and amend the master plan, nowhere in the text does it prohibit city councils from participating in or influencing the amendment process, particularly when municipal procedures are present, allowing council involvement. We have section 5.3 of the comprehensive plan, which I stated earlier, which talks about city councils' approval of comprehensive plan amendments. We have section 8.121 E4 of our land development code, which states that amendments of the comprehensive plan shall be subject to city council approval or adoption. Additionally, Lakewood, Aurora, Parker, Westminster, and Denver all have procedures that allow city councils to consider comprehensive plan amendments. We do not agree that it is contrary to state law. As to the argument that this is an administrative appeal, that administrative appeals are covered by land development section 8.252C, which covers situations where city council may hear an appeal from final decisions issued by the director. That is not the situation before council today. Instead, the applicant has requested and was granted a rehearing before city council to reconsider their proposal to amend the comprehensive plan pursuant to City Council Rule 4L. City Council Rule 4L states, any action taken by city council may be reconsidered, and lists the process by which such consideration can be taken, a process that the city council followed on September 2. Additionally, this is not the last word that city council has on the site, as stated previously. Pursuant to Land Development Code, section 8.2311J, any member of the city council may move to call up the development application for consideration within 17 days of the director's decision. This is not the last time that council could have weighed in on this application or this site. Is there anything else you would like me to address right now?
No, I think you hit the main points. You got rid of some of my list, so that was perfect. I do have a question for the applicant. I'm sorry, I forgot your name. The attorney. One of you guys want to pop up here? Clark, Mr. Clark? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Clark, or the attorney.
Or all the attorneys would show up if I said the attorney. You know, I've, has your, I need to understand, like, when did you buy this, or when did your client buy it, or was there a transaction that took place? Because I get conflicting information that this may, this owner might have had this for a while, and there was an affiliate transaction in 2012.
Yes.
So how long did, can maybe explain that? I want to stop there and maybe explain how that that looked.
2005, an entity bought the property that is affiliated with the current owner. There was a transaction between affiliated entities in 2012 that conveyed the property between them.
So they acquired the property in 2005?
Yes.
Okay. And I think in 2005, if I remember right, that's when the comprehensive plan was updated and then amended in 14.
Right.
And then, so your client or whoever had it purchased in 05, and then it was affiliated, transferred in 12? Am I getting these dates right?
Correct.
Okay. And during that time, obviously, it was light industrial, and your understanding that it was always industrial, and light industrial or PUD industrial or?
At that time, it was zone PUD industrial. Yes.
Okay. I'm not going to have any questions right now. I'm going to let the rest of the council ask questions. A lot of mine were just answered there. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
I'm going to follow up on the legal questions. So the reason that, as I understand it, why we're, we're rehearing it today is because we had a motion to reconsider because new evidence was presented or going to be presented to us. What is that new evidence? I'm not clear on that.
So at this point, I think when you're, when council is voting to reconsider something under the city council rules of procedure, it does not specifically require that there be new information. However, it permits you to consider new information. I know that we have heard a lot of, I heard a lot of things this time around that I didn't last time. And it may be helpful to talk with the applicant about what exactly are the differences? Because I know there was additional information there intended to address some of city council's questions from that last hearing.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So yes, can I go to the applicant with that question of what is the new information presented today compared to the hearing a year ago?
So a year ago, we, we were limited, we limited ourselves because we were talking about a change in the comprehensive plan and not a site plan, and didn't talk in very much detail about the setbacks that we have in the plan, about the vegetation and the trees and the screening that are part of the plan. And so we talked about that a little bit more this time. In addition, since that time, the applicant has added, has adjusted the fencing to be a wooden fence. And we presented the photographs of what that looks like. We didn't present those previously. Has added trees, doubled the number of trees, particularly on the southern portion of the property, which is well beyond the minimums required for development of the site, so that there would be better screening of RVs and coincidentally, better screening of the city's property as well. And we increased the birmingham where the trees are placed, so that there's a little more height there. It's a little harder, again, to see the RVs that would be on the property.
Okay. Thank you for that. Can you stay up there? Because I have another question.
Absolutely.
So you made the statement that CD PAG would probably not permit or allow mixed use development on the landfill at your site. And then we talked about, I believe it was an adjacent site that has mixed use or has residential development that was a landfill. Can you provide more information on the differences between your site and that site?
The principal difference is time. CD PAG's perspective on landfills and development around landfills has changed. And at this day and time, there is no way CD PAG would authorize a residential development that close to a landfill.
Okay. I'll come back as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes, thank you. And this also goes to you, Mr. Clark. When the city was updating the comprehensive plan, did the property owner have the opportunity to review the plan and see the changes that were being made, and then identify that that change in the comp plan was being made for this particular piece of property?
Well, that was 2005. I don't believe so. The timing of both events were pretty close together. But as I commented in my rebuttal, the change in ownership doesn't matter on a takings question. The U.S. Supreme Court has said that if it's a takings, a new owner, even taking with knowledge of the change in regulation, can make a takings claim. The question is, can the property be used? Has the regulation made the property unusable? And here, right now, the property is unusable. If the property continues to be designated for residential development, the evidence we've shown shows that it still has no value. Because you can't economically develop this for residential use. You can't regulatorily develop it for residential use, even if you take the landfill out, because you only have one access point. And fire code won't allow that.
Councilmember Davis, may I interject for just a moment? Sorry, over here. Thanks. Thank you. I know, short. I also just wanted to clarify a little bit. Our land development code and our comprehensive plan are inextricably tied together. There is a link to compatibility and specific criteria that an applicant needs to meet. That is not That is not a consistent regulation that you find in every municipality. So just give the benefit of the doubt to any of our applicants that come in, especially if they are, you know, here... They see the zoning. For really any property owner, the zoning is the most important characteristic of a site, not the Comprehensive Plan designation. And often, what you'll see are municipalities that decouple that requirement and say there should be compatibility with a Comprehensive Plan, but it is not mandatory. So I just want to put out there that not every city looks at this connection as intensively as the city of Arvada does, which can lead to confusion when we have any developer that comes into the city and has this kind of conundrum to face. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garner. That, you just made the point that I was trying to allude to.
Councilmember Rupert.
Thank you. I'm not sure which party this might be too, but I am puzzled by the former landfill on the adjacent property to the southwest. And what is the nature of the mitigation that happened over there that allowed residential around it? Do we... Does staff know what happened there?
Can you repeat that question?
The landfill to the southwest that was mitigated to allow that neighborhood, I'd like to understand, because it seems to me when we ask the compatibility question, we have the entire area to the east of this property is industrial and somewhat heavy industrial. It's the city shops and the bus barns for the district. And if we have a landfill to the southwest that's been mitigated, I'd like to know the nature of that mitigation. And are we trying to get to the same level of protection here, or are they different things? You may not know the answer, and that's all right.
Yeah, I do not know the answer to that question.
I would say they're different things. The landfill in the Forest Springs neighborhood...
Yeah.
...is consolidated material that was piled up so that houses could be built and not be standing over landfill. As I said, it was done relatively long time ago in the regulatory world.
And I think you touched on that sort of process as one of your early-on considerations, that it could be done, that you'd move all of the landfill onto the edge of the property and put residential in the remainder, and it would be cost prohibitive.
Right. Mr. Anderson took a look at that. The cost of doing that is approximately the same as the cost, maybe a little bit less, but approximately the same as the cost of moving all the material off-site. And you end up with fewer building sites. So the cost per unit just goes up.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Marriott.
I've got a couple of questions for the city team. I want to start off with, when a Comprehensive Plan is adopted, when a new one is adopted, as we've been adopting Comprehensive Plans now for 50 years or something, is the intention of the adoption of the new Comprehensive Plan in general to change the use of existing properties much, or is it to look towards the future?
Thank you for the question, councilmember. It's a little bit of both, but primarily, the intention is, when we look at land uses, especially when you consider Arvada, it is a very well-established and developed community with established land uses that are throughout it. So often, what we have to look at is that balance of what do we have, what's viable for the future, and what makes sense? And that's a, you know, that's a process of really evaluating what is vacant, what could change in the future, what are the existing conditions, what does the community have to say about all of these things? And then we try to bring all of those conversations back to both the Planning Commission and the council, so that we can make decisions about that land use.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
I think so. I think, you know, an example, I guess, I was going to give is, would it be likely that a Comprehensive Plan revision would take an established neighborhood, for instance, and put a future Comprehensive Plan designation on it of heavy industrial or urban development when it's over an existing?
No, we're not going to do that.
Not likely?
No.
Okay. And so when a Comprehensive Plan is adopted, is it fair to say that the intention of adopting a Comprehensive Plan isn't to necessarily change the established or adopted uses of property, but to provide kind of general guidance for what the city should look like going forward?
Yes, I would agree with that.
Okay. And would you also agree that the job of the zoning designation is more of a parcel-by-parcel, this is what should happen here?
Yes. I do think that that is what we try to do. And again, I think that gets back to this issue that we've talked about, which is that compatibility between both a Comprehensive Plan and a zoning designation. And frankly, a zoning designation is worth its weight in gold. A Comprehensive Plan land use designation is typically a recommendation.
Right.
A Comprehensive Plan is a visionary document. The way that I try to explain it to anybody that would ask is that a Comprehensive Plan is full of shoulds, full of shoulds, all the things we should do. A land development code is full of the shaws, which are all the things that we are compelled in regulating. And in a Comprehensive Plan, you don't see that kind of language for a very good reason. And that's because we... The future is fuzzy.
Yeah.
We do our best.
Okay. And this is just a little bit, maybe, of an aside, and I think you already addressed this, but that in some places, agreement between the Comprehensive Plan and the zoning is not necessarily required, but somehow, in Arvada, it is. Is there... Was there a specific time that that got put in place or an intention that made that happen? Or how... Do we have any idea how that came about, that we have kind of this somewhat unique feature of having to have agreement between those two?
I don't know specifically when that decision was made. And I will say, it's up to the city to make those decisions, and it's up to the council and to the Planning Commission. I've worked in several municipalities, both here and out of state, and I've never had this regulation. So what we do is we talk about how we can be... It's a recommendation, how we try to maintain that recommendation. When things happen, when circumstances occur like this, there is flexibility for everybody to look at that. And really, what's most important is the zoning designation, not the land use designation in the Comprehensive Plan.
But in this case, when the applicant came to the city and said, "We'd like to utilize this property, given its zone designation," the response by the city staff was, "Well, there's this problem with the Comprehensive Plan and the zone designation, and so we'd like you to address this first."
Yes. That is exactly... That's our process.
Right. Okay. Let me move to another thing. When a Comprehensive Plan is adopted, like the city's going to do in the next couple of years, is there a legal notification given to every property owner in the city that, "Hey, pay attention here, your Comprehensive Plan zoning..." Or your Comprehensive Plan designation may change here?
No. We cannot manage those resources. And I think, similar to what we did with the land development code, and maybe Rachel or Kelsey could speak to the legal process, we also do not do that when we're looking at categorical rezonings that are in line and in sync with the Comprehensive Plan. We don't go out and notify every single property owner.
Right. Okay. So that was going to be my next question or bring me to the next thing. We adopted a new land development code five years ago or something like that, that changed some of our zone designations. And I think the idea there was, we had, over time, accumulated a whole bunch of different ones, and to simplify and streamline. Is that correct? Is that what we did about five years ago or so?
Yes, although I wasn't here, so my colleagues can certainly confirm that.
Right. Okay.
Yes, that was the intent of the land development code. And at the time, we were doing everything with PUDs, and we looked at creating standard zone districts to cover those.
Okay. And as part of that process, as these new designations were applied over the old designations or to replace the old designations, and I remember this, I was part of this, was the intention to not necessarily change anybody's zoning? It might change the name that it was called, but to not change the usage of any property on the process of just adopting the land development code? But that was a parcel-by-parcel thing that might happen at the request of a property owner, but not as a universal thing as this new land development code was adopted?
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay. All right. I think that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Thank you, mayor. I want to review the new information that has been presented, not previously presented, that is just totally about the Comprehensive Plan change. Because what I heard that was new was that CDPHI would not authorize any residential use on a landfill area. Is that new information this time? Because I don't think you brought that before.
I don't remember if we made... If we presented that in testimony at the last hearing or not.
Okay. And the other new point?
It was in the presentation, because it's in the covenant we've negotiated with CDPHI.
Okay. And the other new point of information that I heard was about, we asked about how this other neighborhood was built on a landfill, and you presented evidence that how that happened is that the landfill material was scraped together and put into a mound, and then on the scraped areas, houses were built, and how you tried to apply that solution to this for mixed residential use, because we told you that's what we want with the Comprehensive Plan. And then you said, "That is also not economically feasible. It would cost just as much as it would to truck the material out completely, scrape the whole site."
That's correct.
Okay. And then, let's see.
Now, that was new testimony we presented...
Yes.
...today. But during council's discussion of the presentation at the hearing last year, the question was asked by council, "Aren't there developments in the city that are on landfills?" And the staff answered, "Yes." And I believe that this... That property was one of the ones that was specifically identified.
Right. But then, I'm asking about, like, what's the new information that you brought, which is like, you know...
This is what they did, yes.
This is how they actually accomplished that, and this is why we can't do that on this site. And another reason why we can't, you know, do what is in the Comprehensive Plan is because of the covenant we have with CDPHI, which you didn't talk about before.
Well, we did talk about the covenant before and the land use restrictions in it.
Councilmember Ambrose, just for additional clarity, I just wanted to note, in the ESA that was submitted for this project, there is discussion about what happened with that particular landfill in Forest Springs. Julia can clarify, if you're curious.
Please. Okay. According to CDPHI, the hazardous materials and waste management division records, the adjoining vacant area to the southwest of the site is mapped as a relocated and capped landfill with documented landfill gas monitoring occurring from January 1995 through the present day. The most recent quarterly status report, third and fourth quarters of 2021, dated 2022 in February, notes that based on monitoring results since the startup of the active gas collection system, landfill gas in the landfill area towards the residential development is effectively being controlled. So basically, it's been capped and monitored since 1995, and that meets CDPHI's requirements.
Okay. Thank you. And the other piece of new information that I thought I heard tonight was how a light industrial zoning or designation could be complementary to an area that has high amount of residential or mixed-use residential. I feel like that was new information.
Yeah, I think I made that comment in terms of, you know, basically, a light industrial is a transition from the city's heavy industrial that's immediately there on the east. And it's... So there's an economic... A light industrial use would be an economic use of this property that is both consistent with the industrial uses to the east and transitioning to the residential development to the south and west and north.
Okay. And I know this is not part of the consideration, because we're just looking at... We're not looking at site plans, but I was interested if you had done more of a feasibility study on a solar array, which you mentioned as a possible light industrial use. That was in the slideshow this time, and it wasn't in the slideshow in the previous time?
So a feasibility study on solar wasn't part of the presentation, but Mr. Anderson commented that in his experience, solar arrays can be a use on landfill properties. They do have problems, because there is settling, and that subtle settling can affect the solar panels and the collection of energy. I believe that was in his slide in November of last year as well.
Okay. Okay. I wanted to ask the city, just to verify some of the applicant's statements, that would the city also agree with the applicant that due to CDP regulations and other infrastructure impediments, that it is impossible for mixed-use residential on a former landfill? Is that also the city in agreement with that opinion?
So Councilmember Ambrose, the one thing I'm going to clarify is that none of us are environmental scientists and engineers. So what we do is we rely on that expert opinion from CDPHI, and if CDPHI has provided that guidance, then we're going to follow it. They have vetted that data and that information through their expertise, and we accept that.
So if the applicant says that you got that information from CDPHI, then that's the expertise we're relying on?
Additionally, councilmember, the V-Cup that was approved in 2023 was approved exclusively for commercial uses.
Okay. Okay. And the applicant, would you also agree with what the applicant is saying, that the only way of residential use, mixed use, could be done as in line with the Comprehensive Plan is by completely removing it, which is 62 weeks of heavy truck traffic through the neighborhood to remove the landfill material?
Again, we are not... We haven't vetted the particular development, and we wouldn't be able to say with any expertise that that is the correct course of action. We are in close coordination with CDPHI as well. We will continue to be, as well as with the applicant, if this project is approved, as they move through the development process. And we rely on the data that they are providing. So if they're saying that this is a quasi-judicial hearing, the expectation is that people are being honest.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Pfeiffer, you wish for a second? Go.
Yeah. So going back to the Comprehensive Plan and the zones, where do you know of... It's probably for Rob here, where we have this conflict? Is this the only place we have this conflict that we know of right now?
This is the only place we are aware of at this point in time, yes.
Okay. And, okay. And we don't know, we don't know really the history of how the Comprehensive Plan went from industrial, switched in whatever year, to mixed use?
We do know it happened with the 2005 Comprehensive Plan, but what the thinking was behind that, we don't have anyone on staff who was around at that time, and it's not clear in the record for this particular piece of property.
Okay. So it could have been maybe just something Dylan with the geo site and so forth, and some history around that. And then is the, you know, the zoning where our school... The school barns are in the city, they're just considered public offices' property? He's saying they're heavy and industrial. Is that what they're considered? I'm trying to look at the... I'm looking at the Comprehensive Land Use map. It's just blue, which means government.
Yeah, it is. The government... I'm sorry, the government. The zoning, however, is IG, General Industrial, for the city's facility and the school's facility.
Okay. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Marriott.
Prepare to make a motion if you're ready.
I have questions, Mr. Marriott. So I have a handful of questions here.
So I have a handful of questions here. Just trying to get at the actual meat of the issue because we have a lot on the site plan. There is more information this time. However, we are looking very specifically at the legalities of a comp plan amendment since ours are bound together. So I just want to confirm to our team, I know we've had you answer this question already this evening, that there is no development that is possible with these two things out of alignment. But I just want confirmation from Ms. Garner or Mr. Smithina. Is there any kind of development, we understand possible, that could exist with these two, the comp plan and the LDC being out of alignment?
No, there's not.
There's not?
No.
And then I guess that punts me directly to legal, then that results in a regulatory taking or inverse condemnation, correct?
Well, as with all legal questions, I think we have to answer it depends. It certainly puts the applicant in a rough position because we have not left any sort of uses that comply with both of those, both of those requirements, right? So at this point, I think at some point, we anticipate council will need to change this. Change either the comp plan or change the zoning. And so there has to be a change that occurs at some point.
Okay, thank you. What are the consequences of having this kind of finding? So if council decided to never change this, whatnot, that we like it the way it is or whatnot, and we don't want to make it developable, which I'm not saying that's what we want, I'm saying if that were what was perceived. What would be the consequences to the city for that?
So you're asking if we, if we went to court and a court found that we had, we had engaged in a regulatory taking, is that the question?
Yes.
Okay. So if we had engaged in a regulatory taking, which I'm not necessarily saying is here, I'm just saying it's, you know, there's always risk, right? It would likely result, if it went badly for us, in a million, well, a lot of money awarded against the city. That, end game, that's what it would be.
Okay. Not to mention attorney's fees, city staff time, all of those things to defend the case?
Correct.
Okay. And so, thinking then about the need to potentially bring these two things into alignment either tonight or into the future, however that looks, what would be the next steps in the process then for any potential development, this or any other?
I'm sorry, you're talking about if anybody were to come to the, to the council or to the planning commission with a request?
So essentially, once these two things are in alignment, obviously, that's not a project plan approval, correct?
That's correct.
Yes. So what are the next steps for any project?
Once they have that approval, they now start the development application process with the city. Where they, the permitting process with the city, which is the next stage. And that is where they are submitting detailed site plans to city staff. We are sharing that and referring it out to all the agencies that need to look at it, providing those comments to the applicant, and expecting that that is going to be resubmitted. Comments will be generated, resubmitted, however many times until they have an approved application. At that point, when they have a complete application and have met all the requirements of the city, city code, then the director has the ability to make a decision, which then starts the 17-day clock for a council member to make a request to call this up. At that point, the council will have a discussion in a public meeting where they will make a determination as to whether or not they, everyone agrees to bring that back or not.
Okay. So, because we had heard tonight that this could be the last chance council has to weigh out on this project, but that is not correct?
It is not. It is not correct. This is not the last chance. There are multiple opportunities through the site plan, and that's the council's discretion.
Okay. Thank you. So, Mayor Proton Mormon?
Sorry, I have another question, which I think I know the answer to. I'm going to ask it anyway, just to make sure we're all clear. So we've been talking all about changing the comp plan to match the zoning. We also have the option of changing the zoning to match the comp plan. And we've heard from the applicant that that is not feasible for the use of this property, according to the applicant. Is there any other type of zoning that might work in this property?
That's a great question, Councilmember. There, at this point, there aren't a lot of designations that are going to result in this property being cleaned up. Essentially, the property, whomever owns it is on the hook to do that mitigation. So let's say we zone it open space. Well, then that becomes the city's responsibility to handle all of that mitigation. We have been asked, and we have considered, you know, is this, is this a property that the city wants to take over? Because we have been, that's been a request from the community. And we have talked about it, and the problem is, is that we're in the same boat as any applicant because we have this problem with the comprehensive plan amendment and the zoning designation. So that part just is not going to be solved, no matter what. So if the comprehensive plan is amended to something else, and by the way, I also just want to note that the applicant has brought a comprehensive plan amendment request to the council. So that's what, that's what the council is considering tonight, not a zoning change. If the council declined to move this forward, and we came to you with another request, I don't know what that request would be. Because we, as a public agency, cannot take on that burden. It's a lot of land. We don't have this called out in any of our master plans for recreation, for open space, for a park. It just isn't there. And so we need to be realistic. There are a lot of properties that people would like the city to buy and to make into things that are nicer. We don't have the ability to do that. And furthermore, any applicant that comes to the table is going to need to make a profit. If they're going to put this amount of investment into cleaning up, what is the return on that investment? And I think that's the ultimate kind of question.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
And so, Ms. Garner, then, because the concerns with the, with any emissions that could happen with the methane or creekside stabilization, whatnot, all of that goes through the site plan process, correct?
It does.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
See no other lights, Mr. Marriott?
I'm going to move that R 25-102, a resolution by the city council for the city of Arvada, Colorado, to amend the 2014 Arvada comprehensive land use designation pertaining to 6800 Kilmer Street from mixed-use residential emphasis to industrial office be approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact approved in criteria, findings of fact and approval criteria on pages eight and nine of the staff report. I also want to make some comments about, about my motion here. So I think, number one, I think it's somewhat unfortunate that we have this linkage between our comprehensive plan and our zone designations. And I would encourage the council in the future, particularly as we look at a new comprehensive plan, to take a good hard look at that and decide whether that's what we really want to do or not, and whether that was intentional or whether that's just kind of happened over the years. So I'm going to start with that. But I also want to say, this land, particular piece of land, appears to me to be an unintentional anomaly. I don't see any evidence that there was anything that was intended to change the zoning of this land with the adoption of the comp, comp plan, or way back in 2005 or whenever it happened. I think it's interesting, if you look at the first slide the applicant showed, which was an aerial view, kind of looking to the west, to me, it's always been absolutely obvious what the comprehensive plan designation of this property should be, given that it has boundaries, a very hard, uncrossable boundary in the Crook Canal and Ralston Creek, on three sides of it. And the fourth side is light industrial and industrial property. In fact, the city's own industrial property. Where in the photos, you can see piles of material, you can see heavy equipment moving around, you can see storage sheds for heavy equipment, shops, you know, all the, all the things that a, that a city needs, that also is very industrial development. Not only is close by, it's adjoining. And we, I can't see in a different situation, the city ever recommending that we build housing next to industrial property, particularly that's adjoining heavy industrial property. So I think that, that leaves, you know, this property, I think, has been, been brought forward as, you know, no use by right. And I would ask everybody to think about your own property. Imagine if you were to find that you had no use by right on your own property. I don't think the city ever has the intention of delivering property to anybody with no, no possible uses. But yet, that's what's happened here. And that's why I think it's, it's unintentional. I also think, you know, the property owner is not obligated to ask for rezoning to match the comprehensive plan. But I do think the city is obligated to match the comprehensive plan to the zone district, particularly a zone district that's been in place for in excess now of 50 years. To me, that's very, very compelling. So for all those reasons, I find that this complies with all seven factors associated with approving a comprehensive plan amendment. And I will be voting yes on this motion.
Councilmember Rupert.
Thank you. I too am going to be voting yes. And here, here's my reasoning. One, it's absolutely clear and it's undisputed that we have a conflict between the comp plan and the zoning. Clearly, the zoning's been in place for a very long time. And let's imagine for a second that we are willing to turn this towards the residential. There's absolutely no way that this property makes sense in any kind of residential context. It's on a landfill, but you also can't get into it as a neighborhood. It would require the redevelopment of the properties all the way out to Indiana, and that's not going to happen. We've heard a lot of discussion about pedestrian, lack of pedestrian access. It simply is no, there's no way that this ends up being a residential property. I also am looking at the criteria about, okay, sometimes we hear about the, the character of the neighborhood, and I think, well, adjoining this property is industrial and light industrial. We have buffers between the neighboring properties, and we have a landfill site to the southwest that is, is pretty close to the situation we're facing here. Yes, there are residential neighbors. You're here. And there are buffers between what we see as the intended use. Now, mind you, we're not deciding on the intended use tonight. We're deciding specifically on the comp plan change. But it certainly informs my decision that we have a possibility here of somebody paying attention to creating buffers and trying to create limited sightlines to what the use is going to be. And, and I think candidly, applicant has gone through a number of efforts to make this a reasonable neighbor to the residences. I, I don't, I don't really find the restrictions presented to us by Mr. Seves are persuasive at all. I think it is clear to me that our ordinances, our laws, allow us to be the final decision maker here. The planning commission is an advisory board in this instance. And if you need a history of this actually happening, we made exam, exactly this kind of decision two weeks ago, where we took a decision the opposite of what planning commission did. So clearly, this is what we do, and we have the authority to do it historically. I am concerned about the taking question. I think if we have conflicting ordinances that make a use impossible, that is going to be held to be a taking by the Supreme Court. It has been already, I'm pretty sure. And then you have a question, okay, what are the damages? Now, I think it is fair to say, look, these people bought this property. They knew it was a landfill, fair. They knew it had terrible access, fair. Those are arguments that will diminish the measure of damages, but it doesn't change the fact that there's a taking. And I don't want the city to end up with the liability of that decision because it seems to me that that seem, that's at least a strong possibility. There's a lot of really good evidence that we should be concerned about the landfill and the potential damage to the, to Ralston Creek. And good reason to be concerned about that. The comprehensive plan is not an environmental document. We, the people, our staff, are not environmental experts. That's, as you've heard, why we rely on CDPHE. That's why we worry about, we rely on the Mile High Flood District. Those people have the expertise to protect the environment in this instance. And I frankly think that we, as a council, ought to rely heavily on them to make sure that that is exactly what happens. Because I think all of us are concerned about the potential spills that may happen as the, as the edge of Ralston Creek continues to erode in a storm. And, and mind you, if, if we don't have somebody using the property and taking care of it, then the erosion will continue. We haven't solved any problems if we decline the decision tonight. It is still a landfill, and it's still going to be subject to runoff, and it is still going to be subject to erosion. The difference here is that we have a person in the room that is responsible for taking care of those things as part of their plan. And I think we ought to make sure that we hold the feet to the fire to do that. So for those reasons, I will be voting to approve this.
Councilmember Davis.
No use by right. That's, it's kind of scary. If we do, if we don't do something, it sets a precedent that Arvada is difficult to work with. And that we can't, we can't make decisions that align with what we know today. The taking question, yes, Mr. Rupert, Mr. Marriott, that, it definitely is worrisome. And I will rely on our wonderful city attorneys to, to work through that. Regulations have changed since Forest Springs was built. And I was taking a look at what CDPHE is looking at and what their regulations are today. They are much more stringent than they were 20, 30, 40 years ago, when you could cap a landfill, fill it in, and then build on top of it. What they're finding in California is things are settling, dipping. They're having releases, home foundations are cracking. So it's bringing down property value. It's not increasing their property value. So that, that is very much an issue here. We see that with bentonite here in Colorado when homes are built on those, those kinds of geologic foundations. We have an applicant here who is trying to work very hard with us, very, trying to work with us to make something work for them. And so they're trying to come to middle ground. They're trying to be cooperative. They're trying to do the best they can with what is an old landfill. If you have a better idea, I certainly would love to hear it. The city cannot afford to buy the land. We can't afford the environmental impacts that, that go along with owning a former landfill. I think you understand that. I think, I wish, I wish someone would step up and buy the property and enhance it in a way that would be compatible with. a way that would be compatible with the, with the community. I'm hoping that our decision tonight will set precedent for into the future because we're probably more than likely going to face this again and again where the comp plan and the zoning doesn't match. Something that I actually wrote down in ink, and it made a big impression on me, is that the comprehensive, comprehensive plan is a visionary document. It's what we want, what we know now, what we want it to look like into the future. But the land development code is full of the shoulds, and that zoning trumps the land use designation. This is, once again, a very hard emotional versus logical decision. It's highly charged emotionally, and man, I am struggling with making a decision. But just hearing Mr. Marriott, Mr. Rupert, listening to the presentation, and of course, listening to our community and the passion that you have, and I thank you for that, and listening to city staff, I have to vote yes on the motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Thank you, Mayor. So to summarize, from what I understand, in 2005, the zoning and comprehensive plan diverged, but the comprehensive plan made this area mixed-use residential. And in 2020, City Council voted the zoning from industrial to be light industrial, still in conflict with the comprehensive plan designation. And so the conflict between the two and it not being resolved, I think, puts the city at significant risk that this council has to resolve. And while it seems that most of us, public opinion here, would have preferred that it be open space, the city can't afford to purchase this and then mitigate the site for that purpose. So I'll be voting yes on this, and my decision is solely about aligning the comprehensive plan with the zoning. The site, as light industrial, does not have to be RV storage. One possibility is solar, which I appreciate the applicant investigating and encouraging a further look at, as a solar array is not possible with residential. I do appreciate the public comments which brought back my previous comments and which I said that this would not be compatible due to how it's surrounded by majority residential neighborhoods and how it's against public welfare because this is a highly recreational area. You all should do that every time, because we look through thousands of pages of documents, and we want to be held accountable. And so I did make those comments before, but I think the new evidence introduced on how CD-PHE will not allow residential use of the site is very compelling, and I'm convinced that having an applicant responsible and incentivized to care for the environmental mitigation on this property is the most important aspect to consider when looking at public welfare, which is criteria seven. So I side with the expert evidence that's been presented that the residential use on this parcel is inappropriate with the criteria that has been presented, and I ask that this site plan be closely monitored and come before City Council again for approval rather than administrative approval to ensure that the light industrial use and cleanup of this parcel before anything happens on it is done properly and for the benefit of the residents of Arvada.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Well.
She did a really good speech, and I have like words on a pad, but I'll try to put
it together. You know, I struggle with this one, and I'm going to cut straight to the chase. I think the issue is the information I've gotten tonight around the taking is real, and you know what? I hope, I hope there's not a comprehensive plan and zone conflict, because this is the first I've ever dealt with one, and I hope it's the only one we will ever deal with, and that's what's causing the problem tonight. And so for the information provided to me, on top of what everyone else said tonight, which is spot-on, and my brain was all over the place with all the same thoughts that everyone's been discussing, is let's make sure that this doesn't happen again with the conflict and the zoning of the comprehensive plan. But also, I wanted to point out something that was interesting tonight that maybe we didn't think through, but sometimes we conflict with our own priorities and our own thoughts. When we sit up here and we think about affordable housing, but yet we have a mixed use, and they're going to spend $400,000 per house to mitigate it before they could even build anything. We would even contradict ourselves to even think that we're going to promote affordable housing or any type of housing that is affordable. We'd have $2 million townhouses sitting there. And so I, we need to be careful of, of being thoughtful of our conversations, and you know, I agree that we should stay with the comprehensive plan. I would love to do that. But I also will point out that, you know, since evidence was given by Gina, that the Amazon area, if we do not, if we're so rigid, we would never re-change that from office, industrial, retail, ever, if we were so rigid to the comprehensive plan. So, you know, we have to be careful because these are visionary documents, and we also need to be aware that what we visioned to be 10 years ago or 15 years ago may not be realistic today, and we have to have some room of flexibility to understand, especially when there's new information being given. It might not be monumental, but there are some factoids here and some new territory we've crossed that we might not be happy with where this needs to go, but it's probably necessary to just make it right. And that's where we are today. I will be supporting it as well, and I'm sure we should talk about the comprehensive plan soon anyways, and its, its future and what it needs to look like going forward. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. This was a very tough one, and I will be agreeing with my colleagues tonight, and I think for me, the tough information that was provided tonight that I did not hear, it may have been presented, but you know, was not made as poignant, I think, as tonight, is that CD-PHE would not allow or not let us proceed with mixed use on this property. I think that was, that was a crucial piece of evidence presented to me tonight that I felt like reinforced this concept that there's no use by right then for this property to proceed in our current form with the conflict between the comprehensive plan and the zoning. But I do want to say, and I think Councilmember Ambrose had said already about how important it is that we watch very closely this process of this project as it moves forward and the environmental review. I want to avoid as much as possible, just, well, just trust us. I want to see the evidence. I want to see all the documents. I want to be able to read everything and make sure that we have the ability to, to really take the responsibility that we have, and that is, you know, we can influence the site development plan, and I really believe we should take that responsibility and not just take it for what it is and that it's going to be this certain type of development. But we need to be incorporating all the concerns that we heard tonight into our consideration of what this project can look like moving forward and make sure we're mitigating everything that needs to be mitigated and making the project fit as best it can and conform with the community. So I will be supporting it tonight, but I really want to be scrutinizing this project through its process and making sure that we're addressing the concerns we heard.
Thank you. Ditto? I don't think we're in laughing mode right now, but I will just echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I am concerned about the inability to have any kind of development possible on this site other than it remains as is. Ultimately, the comp plan and the land development code would have to be realigned, whether it was tonight, whether it was in five years. It is something that must happen for this site. Even if the city were to take it over and make it open space, that is still something that would be required to happen. So rather than kicking the can down the road, we might as well stand up and actually friggin' do the work. That's, you elected us to do, even if it's not the answer you want. So with that, I will also be supporting this because we need to align the two things. However, for all of the concerns that you have raised to us tonight with the methane emissions for health and public safety, the creek erosions with the arsenic released into the water, with other items, we've already had spillage into that drainage way. That is highly concerning to me, and we need to make sure that that creek bed is stabilized and protected. In addition, the settling of the land, CD-PHE would not allow residential housing on land that is not cleaned up. While there are other items going on this land, they also, they have weight. Could those also be destabilized? Could they increase emissions? Could they increase settling of the land? These are all things that have to be addressed in the site plan process and things that I distinctly, I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Mormon. I want to see the evidence that they are being addressed in the site plan process. I do know our partners at CD-PHE and Mile High Flood District are the experts on these issues, and I look forward to seeing their findings and how this process moves forward with the team. And so with that, I will call the vote. Councilmember Rupert. And all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you all very much. I know this isn't easy, and it's not always the outcomes we want, but the process does continue forward. And so with that, I will close public hearings. I will open the five-minute public comment limit. If there is anyone, you may come forward, Ms. McCarthy. I will make you the same offer. Oh, sorry. Ms. Clemmons, my sincerest apologies. I think my brain is fried tonight. I know who you are. Ms. McCarthy is right over there, yes. Hi, Ms. McCarthy. I am so sorry. My brain is fried, I think, after, after that. Nonetheless, please come down. I will make you the same offer I offered to the Allendale residents two weeks ago. You may now yell at us.
Lynn Clemmons, and I'm at 6202 Kilmer Loop, president of Westwood Villas HOA. Believe it or not, 20 years ago, my property was built on contaminated land that was cleaned up. And I am also dealing with 5950 McIntyre, and my property is seven feet from that contaminated land. I invite any of you or all of you to come and talk to Jefferson County, because I'm in the same boat that's going on here. My land is right next to a contaminated area that's been cleaned up, and there's only a seven-foot setback. The other issue is three big warehouses, 500,000 square feet with 144 truck bays. We, as McIntyre Neighbors United, have gotten a traffic report that says it could be as many as 3,000 trips a day coming out of that property and those three warehouses that are supposedly a business industrial complex. I'm hoping that the city can help me. One thing you can do right now, my McIntyre Neighbors United, McIntyre Street turns into, it's a hill and a blind curve at West 683rd Avenue. Last time I was here, I asked for a traffic light and a device that would monitor the speed of the, of the traffic coming down that hill around that blind curve. Every time I turn left to go south, I'm taking my, I'm taking my life in my hands. I have to wait and wait and wait until there's no traffic coming, because I can't determine the speed limit that Arvada has set is 35 miles an hour. Not every vehicle is coming down at 35 miles an hour. They're coming down anywhere from 40 to 50. And turning left, and I have a lot of seniors in my complex, there is a senior complex across Amira, they have 119 residents, and we have two residential neighborhoods that cannot get out, that's the only way in, the only way out. And I'm asking the city, if we can't put the traffic light in yet because we're waiting for money, we can set a traffic speed determinator to alert people that it's 35 miles an hour. And please, put something there so that they can slow down and my people aren't put at jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hallissey, come on back.
Only because my name was mentioned. I have to, so Gina Hallissey, and the first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to thank John Marriott and Brad Rupert for serving. Yours was short-lived. We understand. You've been on the dice a long time, and we really do appreciate all that. I didn't like your answer, but we really do appreciate your thoughtfulness through everything all these years. I did want to mention something to my friend Bob Pfeiffer, because you mentioned the Amazon site. So the Amazon site, the comp plan does say that it should be office, industrial, retail, yada, yada, but that is a Jefferson County site. It's owned agricultural, so it's not annexed yet. It is an agricultural site, and it has to be rezoned. So there's a lot of things, but my, my point I wanted to make is that when you collaborate as a community, as a city, with the developer, you can make something happen when there's all these uses around it. So I really feel that that was a good example of the community and the developer and the city all coming together to say, okay, there's all these things. It's zoned this, it's, comp plan says this, we would like it to be this. It's all came together for something good that does bring economic value. It brings housing needs that we don't have in that area. It also brings more open space. It protects the creek. And I know I sound like I'm pitching for them, but I'm just telling you that the process can work when you involve the community. I think it's unfortunate how this process went with this development, because I think you lost, you lose trust with the community when, whatever it was, mistake or not, I don't think it was a mistake, mistake, I think it was intentional back then, based on the site maps and what you see. So, you know, you all developed everything around it and let everything go in around it, so then you have that last little puzzle piece, and it's the hardest piece to fit. So I applaud you all for trying, but I think you're going to see this again, and you'll probably hear from us again, and I'll probably be wearing my green shirt because it's by the creek, and we protect the creek at all costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hallissey. Is there anyone else in the chamber she would like to give public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comment at this time. Open it to City Council for council committee reports. Ms. Davis.
All right, I'll be fast. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Bud Starker on his CML Sam Mehmet Good Governance Award. Mayor Starker is term-limited, so he will be rolling off, but congratulations to my friend Bud. I went to a site selector feedback dinner, dinner that, where folks come and they take a look, they're from outside of the state, and they take a look to see what attributes are attractive for business to get business here into the state of Colorado, and I think making decisions like tonight where we're trying to work with business is very important. Then just, oh, congratulations to the Marge Park opening. We had a lot of fun there, so thank you so much.
Did you, oh, I'll, I'll go. He's, he's got to look something up. So I second Councilmember Davis's congratulations to Mayor Bud Starker of Wheat Ridge. Mayor Starker truly is the, he's a statesman amongst the mayors. I respect him tremendously. He's a wonderful man, and I look forward to getting one more really great day with him as we build break ground next week on the Habitat for Humanity Griffith Station project. The Metro mayors are doing our annual Habitat Build Day, and this year it's in Arvada, so I look forward to welcoming all the mayors, and we're having it a little bit early this year so that Mayor Starker can join us before the election. So we're having that. Do not forget that this coming Friday is Trick or Treat Street in Old Town, Arvada. I may be the only one with a small child up here, so I may be the only one who will be out there for all the candy, but it is one of my all-time favorite events of the year, all the kids in their costumes. It's absolutely amazing. So, and adults come in full costume, too, so please do come out if you like Halloween. It's a great time. It begins around 4:30, 5 o'clock in Old Town Friday evening. Arvada Center has Lady Day, oh, you know what? I will default, I will defer to you for the Arvada Center than Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. Lady Day, I've seen it at Emerson's Bar and Grill. It's absolutely phenomenal. Wow, Billie Holiday. I mean, just to go back in time and relive that music was phenomenal and to learn about, a lot more about her life that I did not know, so I highly, highly recommend it. And then my only other announcement is the pumpkin patch, which is on Wadsworth and 78, 77? Thank you. pumpkin patch, which is on Wadsworth and seventy-eighth, seventy-seven. Thank you. Please, please, please come out and support that for Habitat for Humanity. There's still lots and lots of pumpkins of all different sizes and colors. And so I plan to go do some shopping this weekend as well, before the big pumpkin carving. So I haven't, I don't have one scheduled yet. All right, so that that would be it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. So they got it. Councilmember Davis.
And you're probably, we're gonna say this, Mayor, but thank you, Councilmember Rupert and Councilmember Marriott. It's been a pleasure working with both of you, and I love to hear your your responses and commentary on the dais. I've learned a lot. And you're not gonna, you'll still see me around. One is Kiwanis, and one, I just go by John's house just to harass him. So I just, I'm very thankful for your service and for your friendship, quite frankly.
So I will note, as we noted earlier, this is the last public hearing for Councilmembers Pfeiffer and Marriott. We do have a workshop next week. Rupert, what is wrong with me?
It's late.
Okay. Thank you. I don't, I don't want to say goodbye to you for a long time, Councilmember Pfeiffer. Oh, Councilmembers Rupert and Marriott. But we will have a workshop next week, so they get to be up here one more time. The final thing is Election Day is November fourth. Everybody should have their ballots by now. I encourage you to research. We have some really amazing candidates out there this year. So go contact them, meet them, learn about their visions for Arvada. And thank you so much, everybody, for being great public participants. Mr. Wick, do we have any items from you?
Next week, you do have three workshops. One is Sidewalk Assistance Program Updates, the Waste Diversion Action Plan Update, and the 2026 Pay Plan Update.
Wonderful. Ms. Morris?
So I actually have something today. I will.
First time in six years.
No, nine, I've had a couple of other things, I feel like, some other times. But I just want to join everybody else in thanking Councilmember Rupert and Councilmember Marriott. I have really enjoyed getting to know both of you and being the city attorney while you're on council. Councilmember Marriott and I have had a lot of really fun debates. I have enjoyed it. I have thoroughly enjoyed it. He definitely has that lawyer vibe, right? And Councilmember Rupert, you know, I have loved hearing about your travels, and I always really like having an attorney on council. It just makes me, it just makes me feel good when we have somebody who kind of gets what I'm talking about. So thank you both, and I've really enjoyed working with you.
Indeed. I'll I'll save my comments for for next week, because, well, and we'll do it all again. We do it multiple times. And then the eleventh, when we have cake. But yeah, we'll have plenty. Don't worry. Anyway, thank you, guys. All right. We're getting silly. We are adjourned.